Everybody to the meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission of Thursday, July 15th, 2021. And as usual, in accordance with Executive Order N-2920, the Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually. Please go to the county website and you can get instructions on how to join us via computer or by telephone. And with that, I will call the main order and ask everybody to join me in a salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're kind of out of sync tonight. I'd take a roll call, Laura, please.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Here.
Noah Levy?
Here.
Mike Newman?
Here.
Peggy O'Neil?
Here.
Brian Mitchell? Late.
Brian will be late with us.
Melanie McCaver?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome, everybody. We have a forum, so we'll have a meeting. Any modifications, Director?
No modifications would be attended this time. There are a lot of samples. All of them are, or most of them are related to public comment.
Your voice is really coming across strange. It was like techno or something. I don't know what you call that, but.
Yeah.
Does that, did it sound that way to everybody else? I don't know.
Yeah. It was a little muffled and stuff. Maybe if everybody else mutes.
Yeah, I don't know if it might have been related to other people's mics being on when he was talking.
All right.
Yeah, or your internet speed there in the building, maybe now that everyone's there. I don't know.
Well, we'll try. Muting would be the easiest one in between. So with that, we'll go to public comment. And this is a time that anybody can speak on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. So we get to participants. Attendees, looks like we got a couple hands up. The first caller is Public 5288. Go ahead, 5288.
Can you hear me? I think I got unmuted.
Yes.
Ken Stowinski, I wanted to report out a little bit of what happened today at the zoning administrators meeting. It was a quite interesting and informative meeting there. And I, maybe I came along with the wrong impression, but I don't think so. It was kind of revealed that for the last five years, the county has been allowing people to have ancillary propagation. It was stated 10%, but I keep seeing it more than 10%. At that meeting, I think it was one with 18% that might have been tabled. But this ancillary propagation that was discussed at that meeting, it doesn't sound like it's being taxed. It's not treated as part of the growth thing, as far as I could tell at that zoning administrator meeting. And that was disturbing to me because it actually is cultivation. And I don't know if this is some exemption. I don't know if this was addressed in sequer in the process, but it sounded like at that zoning administrators meeting that there was, people would have, have, instead of 10,000 square foot, they're growing 11,000 square foot of cultivation. Because there's no doubt in my mind that the nurseries and the growing of the plants and what happens in those facilities is cultivation. So that was something I called into question, and it's something that maybe I'll have a chance to speak on a little later in the meeting. So that was very interesting to me. I brought up the question on all of the projects that had a well, whether any kind of hydrologist had made a determination they were hydrologically or connected or not. And that question was obviously totally dodged. My understanding is a hydrologist like Steve McDronan, and I don't know what Steve was making, I don't know, maybe $50,000 at a teacher at Humboldt, could be had possibly full-time by the county. And this would be an acceptable, at least an attempt, to certify whether these wells are hightilled or disconnected. But none of our permits have had that, that I've seen unless there's been special ones with its own EIR, and those were addressed. So again, this is a really major concern. And so I, again, will be pulling everything off the consent that has any kind of well or water source that might be hydrologically connected until such time as we get a hydrologist on staff to go ahead and at least do our due diligence to certify that that's the case. Thank you, Robert, to you to speak on the zoning administrators meeting today.
Thank you, Kent. Next is Tanya Horlick, please. You there, Tanya? Star six to, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for having me on. And I want to make a general comment and rhetorical question to the commission. I'm attending as a resident of the United States for my entire life of 35 years. I was raised in Washington State. I was raised to be a member of the government or a lawyer, and I deeply respect the system and how it keeps order. I also am a witness to how the system itself needs to have corrections and the members of government.
Excuse me, Chairman. There is something in the background there.
Thank you. Can I continue? It is of imperative importance that each of you as members of our government consider the effects of each of your decisions for at least seven generations. We know this from our native traditions that have been curtailed by the domination of business, business interests over the interests of the ecological community. You as commissioners have taken oaths and sworn to uphold the general mandate, the general plan of Humboldt County. That general plan for our entire county and all of its residents should always take precedence over short-term business interests. I implore you commissioners to look deep into your hearts, deep into your hearts, and imagine how it'd be for any of you to be an animal here on the earth with barely any access to water and barely any access to food while you assign our water resources to the growth of more cannabis in a glutted industry. I implore you to look deeply into your hearts and consider the effects of each of your decisions to approve business interests when you have not upheld your mandate to assess what kind of water resources are available in Humboldt County before you assign those water resources to more business interests. I implore you commissioners, please look at the long-term effects of each of your decisions and think more of our ecological community and less of individual businesses. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I've been doing that purpose to stop the feedback. Next caller is Canatopia, please.
Hi, this is Patricia Lai, and I have been working at this space since the ordinance was passed February 26, 2016. And I worked in the industry prior, and I work for the environment as well. And to Public 5288, where have you been regarding nursery or ancillary propagation? There is a lot of things going on with Cal cannabis and the way the code is and what we must wriggle our ways into, contort ourselves to meet a policy developed in Sacramento. And immature plant area has been on the table since Cal cannabis took charge. Regarding hydrologic connectivity, groundwater is incredibly complicated. And again, we are in the state of California, and there's a lot of policy and things. Of course, of course, we want to do the right thing, but it's just not so simple. And to say, to say that you're going to pull everything off is like, I don't, I just, please stop wasting our time. I think a lot of these things need to be addressed, but I think also people need to move forward. And like a lot of, like my project I represent today has been waiting since January, or excuse me, since February 26, 2016, to finally have its time here today. And we just want to grow. So Tanya Horlick, thank you so much for stating the importance of seven generations and the seven generations perspective. I implore you to bring solutions to the table or solution makers to the table in dialogue so we can bring that to more ways so you feel heard and that that seven generations perspective is honored. And I was just, I drove up, I dropped my kid off down in LA County with my parents. I drove up from there to be in Arcata and work and be here on Zoom at this hearing today. And along the five, I saw, you know, all these banners saying, save California's water, build more dams. And I would love you to help educate those folks, Tanya Horlick, because that would be really amazing. Thank you, commissioners, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller, Public 7207. Star six, unmuted.
Hi, sorry about that. I was not provided a number, so I didn't know that was me. I am just writing a comment to you guys today because I wanted to, it was brought to my attention by a client in mind that the defensible space for TPZ zones seem to be a little excessive. And so I was calling to request from the commission, to the commissions and to commissioners and staff to consider a recommendation for amending the zoning ordinance for land that's next to TPZ zone land. Considering that these lands that are zone TPZ get extreme tax credits, they don't have to pay taxes unless they timber harvest. And I know I go into that in the comments that I provided you guys in writing. And so mostly I just want to highlight and see a discussion on that because, you know, there is no, if a timberland is owned by an industrial timber company, they do not have the intentions of ever really building a residence.
Chair, is that appropriate for something here right now? She can speak on anything to us to at this time. This is.
I thought that was on the CCLU.
According to what was told to me, because it was not the specific topic on there, that.
Thank you. I would just say finish your, your time. You have about a minute and a half left.
Okay, thank you. And so I was basically, I would just like to see you guys discuss an amendment and consider an amendment to the ordinance considering TPZ land next to TPZ with the defensible space and, you know, considering that they do not have the intentions of building a residence there, that a 200 or 300-foot buffer from TPZ zone land is extremely excessive, considering Cal Fire only really requires 100 feet defensible space from a residence. 150 feet defensible space would be a suffice. So if a residence has to be 30 feet from a property line, a 200, you know, 100, 100 feet buffer from a property, a project has 100-foot buffer from a property line, that would be 130 feet, you know, something along those lines, you're already getting to go beyond what's recommended. So I just think, you know, it needs to be there, but it needs to be a more reasonable setback that's suffice to what the activities that are happening. And also considering these are ag-exempt structures as well, or outdoor plants, you know, so to have a buffer, it should be a buffer for fire protection of assets.
You have 30 seconds.
Considering it's TPZ zone. Thank you, and I consider to reread my written comment.
Thank you. Next caller is Carmen Gonzalez. Go ahead, Carmen.
We are in the worst drought in California history. Streams are drying up. The rivers are dead. Stop approving more cannabis cultivation projects. That is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. So we have a long consent agenda. So I'm going to go through and ask on each issue if anybody on the commission or the public wishes to have this item polled, and then we will see where we stand at the end. All right. The first item on the public or consent agenda is Seaside Ranch LLC in the Shelter Cove area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this item polled? I see a hand up, so it was polled. All right. Item number two, the Humboldt Cure Incorporated in the Alder Point area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this one pulled? I've seen a hand up. This one will be pulled. Item number three, Big Sun Farms in the Harris area. Does anybody wish to have this one pulled? Yes, this one's pulled as well. All right. The next one is item number four, Big Sun Farms in the Harris area. There's two in a row on that project, or they're separate projects, I should say. And that one is pulled as well. All right. Next one is item number five, which is already being continued to a date uncertain, so let's skip past that one. Item number six is Kenzie Ridge LLC in the Willow Creek area. Seems to be pulled. All right. Next one, item number seven, Canatopia in the Alder Point area. It's pulled. Next item, number eight, which is also Canatopia. It's a second project in the Alder Point area, and I see two hands up on that one. All right. Next item is item number nine, which is Tony Palamara, Stacy Palamar and Rachel Starr in the Alder Point area, but it is continued to a date uncertain, so we'll leave that to be continued. Item number 10, Daisy Farm LLC in the Densmore area. Anybody wish to have this one pulled? All right. Item number 11, Credo RA LLC in the Bridgeville area. I see a hand up. Next would be number 12, Berry Land Farms in the Densmore area. That is pulled. Item number 13, Echo Yard Incorporated in the Bloxford area is continued already to a date uncertain, so that will stay on consent. Item number 14, BLM Holdings LLC in the Garberville area. I see a hand up. Okay. Next is item number 15, Over the Bridge Farm LLC in the Alder Point area. Next is item number 16, Doja Gold LLC in the Willow Creek area. Item number 17 is David Cranmar in the freshwater area, and it has been asked for a continuance to August 19th, so that will stay on consent. Takes us to item number 18 is Measure Special Permit for After-the-Fact Tree Removal in the Fortuna area. Pulled. Thought this one might slip by. Next item is item number 19, Victor Blanc in the Corbell area. Is there anybody who wishes to pull this one? And of course, pulled. This is not a cannabis project, so. All right. So that brings us to item number 20, the last on the consent, and it's Bigfoot Cannabis Company LLC, and it has been continued to a date uncertain. So unless I missed something, everything was pulled off of consent. And I was going to make a note at the beginning, but if you've got the agenda, we are not going to do consent until after we do continued public hearings that were moved from last week, so, or last meeting, I should say. So we are going to go to item number G, which is Continued Public Hearings, and then we will come back to the items that were pulled tonight. So with that, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar, basically the four items that were continued to a future date.
Also move.
Go approve the consent calendar.
Mike was the first. Melanie, what was, you just were seconding the consent calendar? I didn't hear.
I did that.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on that? Okay, Laura, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell? Oh, okay. Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Thank you, Laura. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so now we will move into Continued Public Hearings, and the first one is New Singular Wireless PCS Special Permit and PWM Incorporated Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit in the Arcade area, and I would ask for a staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. This is Primal Arbutland Logistics or planning consultants.
Welcome.
To the county. Thank you. So I've had a PowerPoint presentation. If I can do screen share, I will.
Go ahead.
It's indicating that that's been disabled by the host.
Jerry, you have to give him permission to share his screen. All right, the director and the IT guy were working on something, so he's getting on. Okay, you should be able to share the screen now.
Let's see.
Yes, there you go.
So this item is, actually two items and one here this evening. Both involve proposed cell towers in the Arcata Bottoms area, one from AT&amp;T, and also one from PWM Incorporated, one's a special permit, one's a use permit. The AT&amp;T project proposes a 100-foot-tall faux-water tank design that would be capable of supporting two wireless carriers. We have a ground-mounted equipment area of 40 by 45 feet, and that particular application was filed October 29th of 2020. The second proposal is from PWM, and that proposes a 130-foot tall lattice tower that would be capable of supporting four wireless carriers. And noted here is that the applicant had indicated to us, to staff, that there's potential to reduce the height of that tower by perhaps 10 feet to about 120 feet and still provide the ability for four wireless carriers, although their preference is, from a design standpoint, is to remain at 130 feet. So like the AT&amp;T proposal, a relatively small ground-mounted equipment, lease space of 50 by 60 feet, that application was filed more recently on February 9th of this year. An aerial of the projects down on the Arcata Bottoms and the PWM site on the north side of Foster Avenue, north of Dolly Garden Road, just in on the northwest side of existing warehouses at the property. The AT&amp;T site is on the north side of Foster Avenue, closer to Foster Avenue, just north of the end of James Road. And see on the aerial, some of the prominent landmarks, if you will, nearby in this park, about 1,500 feet to the northwest, Arcata, the city of Arcata itself, further to the east. And then south of Foster, south of Foster Avenue, we have school and church facility. There's residences in the area near the AT&amp;C, AT&amp;T site, and then there's also single-family homes over on Foster Avenue near the PWM site. So starting with AT&amp;T, their site plan would have the tower location towards the southwest corner of the site, accessible through an existing driveway connection to Foster Avenue, and then a new driveway would be leading into a gated, the gated equipment area, where shown here on this, on this slide, about 60 or so feet back from the edge of the road and about 50 or so feet, 55 feet from the west property line elevation shown here. This is the, this is the project for AT&amp;T that's proposed as a faux-water tank. And so this tank is proposed at, is designed at about 100 feet in height to the top of the tank. The tank itself would occupy about the upper quarter of that tower, about 25 feet or so, 24 feet. So the tank itself would be about 17 feet wide, and then supported by a lattice tower. And then in this exhibit, you can see the ground-mounted equipment enclosed in a fenced area. And this. And this was a example graphic provided by the applicants of a similar type of design, another, another AT&amp;T location. This is a metal and wood exterior intended to have it provide sort of a rustic fish, if you will. And then dark colors on the power itself, and then the ground mounted equipment. Couple of photos of the site itself, this is right off the entryway, north of James Road, existing gated access to the site. And then the power location would be just to the, to the right, to the east of the gated entry. And this shows a little closer, closer view of that proposed tower location, that our footprint location, equipment location. Off of AT&amp;T. And looking north, this is photo, looking north from James Road towards the site, you can see that gated entry here. And and then the power itself would be behind this, the standard trees here. Just on the north side of Foster. And then this is a photo looking west along Foster Avenue to the tower location. You can see a stand of trees along the the roadway frontage provides sunscreen as you, as you get closer to that site. And just a couple of pictures I pulled out from the, from the photo simulations that were provided by by the AT&amp;T team. This shows the, the tower, the projection of the tower. And this is looking east along Foster Avenue. And then this is one looking north along James Road towards, towards Foster Avenue in the site. So you can see the tower, tower here as well. And switching to PWM, similar type of of enclosure in terms of ground mounted equipment. Power itself towards the center of that enclosure. And then there'd be a series of, of generators that would be provided and propane tank and then equipment cabinets. As well, all within a block fenced or gated. Facility, then an elevation of this tower, and this is shown at a hundred and thirty feet. And you can see the, the provision of four wireless carriers towards the top of that, of that tower. And then ground mounted equipment at the base. This is a photo of the location, this is the general location of the proposed tower tucked in on the, the north and west side of some of the existing warehouses, existing driveway and equipment stored there right now. And then a couple of the photo simulations from the applicant showing both the, the tower as well as. PG&E power poles that are existing in the area. So this is just our pop up over the, over the top of the warehouses. This is looking west towards the site. And this is along Jane, James Road, looking northwest towards the site again with the, the tower and PG&E poles. That would occur, then a couple of photos also snapped. This is looking east from Sidell Road, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, towards the PWM tower location. This, the, the general location here on the, the northwest side of these warehouses. And then looking north from Dolly Garden Road to the PWM power location, you can see the, the existing warehouses here in the, in the background. And then the power itself would be alongside the warehouses. This is a photograph from the, the general location of the tower. Driveway leading to the tower. And this, just so you can see the location of, of an existing end of trees that run along the north side of some of the residential properties on Foster Avenue. So this is looking towards the southwest from where the tower itself would be. And then a shot looking along Foster Avenue towards, as you approach the project site driveway here on the left hand side. Of the, of the photo, and then you can see the warehouses between some of the, some of the Uplift Districts that, that line the frontage of the Foster Avenue. And took one, one final photo, this was from Innes Park in Arcata looking west. So the, so the AT&amp;T tower would be more or less towards the right hand side of the, of the photo behind the warehouses. PWM tower towards behind the warehouses and then the AT&amp;T tower more towards the left hand side of the photo along the Foster, Foster Avenue frontage. So their number of general plan telecommunication element policies and such that, among other things, require alternatives analysis required for new towers. Both applicants have provided that. The intent was to, is to achieve reliable access, but at the same time preserving or taking into account the county's rural character. And that would include protection of scenic, natural and cultural resources. Then with respect to design, the thought is that. As towers are, or new towers are installed. The goal would be to reduce the visibility or visual clutter of those types of, those types of facilities. And that would include preference towards utilizing existing structures for co-location. There's an opportunity to do so stealth designs of these, of these towers along with multiple type designs. And then use screening where possible, and then a steffing approach if, if that can be achieved. Some of the key staff findings that are summarized in the staff report. First, with respect to PWM project, again, we've got a tower height of a hundred and thirty feet proposed, although applicant has indicated a possibility to go down about ten feet to a hundred and twenty. Still provide ability for four carriers. This particular site is partially shielded by trees along the roadway frontages and at the property lines. And also by the warehouse structures to the east, the tallest of those structures is about fifty eight feet high. This particular site provides greater space from Foster Avenue, about eight hundred feet. And then likewise, in terms of proximity to residences, it's about six hundred and fifty feet plus. The two homes along Foster Avenue to the south and southwest. Generally, staff thinks that it's, it's difficult to see the tower or, or majority of the tower from most public roads in developed areas of Arcata. Arcata and the like. And also with respect to, to the shielding in part by the, by the warehouse structure. And again, this particular proposal would provide co-location for up to four wireless carriers. And then with respect to the AT&amp;T project, we've got a tower height proposed at a hundred feet. A stealth design, the full water tank. The antennas, just to be clear, the antennas would be located within the tank, not mounted on the exterior of the tank. So the idea is that it would be a stealth design with respect to, to how that might, that might work. Closer setback to Foster Avenue, about sixty feet, about four hundred feet to homes to the south and southwest. And then there's also. From the, to this, along James Road, we've got Fuente, Nueva Charter School, and then Saint Mary Church. And then as noted earlier in the aerial, Innes Park, about fifteen hundred feet or so to the north, north east. And this particular proposal, the full water tank design for AT&amp;T would provide for co-location of up to two carriers. In terms of environmental review, staff has, has identified potential use for a categorical exemption, class threes for construction of new small facilities or structures. In terms of agency and public comments, there are a number of neighbor comments that have been received. Including concerns with respect to property values and views. The staff report identifies or speaks to a number of the issues with respective, respective views, environmental concerns and public health concerns that include, for example. Ultra magnetic radiation or, or concerns related to that. And public health in general will note that AT&amp;T has provided their, their study with respect to, to, to that. And has found that their project would be in compliance with federal regulations. While PWM has indicated they would provide such a study as, as carriers are identified to, to be placed on, to their, their proposed tower. Also. Married letters of support for the AT&amp;T proposal, I think three or so that may have come in in your previous packet. And then in terms of referral comments, recommended approvals from Public Works and, and from Arcata Fire. So with that, the staff recommendation, staff supports, we've got two proposals here in proximity to one another in the Arcata Bottoms. Staff supports the idea of a single wireless carrier in this area that would be capable of supporting multiple carriers on the same, on the same tower, same facility. And the staff recommendation to the commission is to have the commission. Consider testimony, open the hearing, consider testimony, have deliberation, hear from the applicants, and then determine which facility might be. Appropriately, appropriately identified for, for pool in the Arcata Bottoms. And then to continue this matter, these two particular project items to your, to your August fifth meeting. And then with, along with appropriate direction staff, and we can turn with prepared resolutions that will be included in your packet. And then return on August fifth for a decision on both, both projects. So I think that includes my, my presentation at this point. I'm sorry, Chair, I think you might be on mute.
I am, you're right, I muted myself. So is there any questions of staff before we open this up so we can get some public comment? Any clarify, anything from any of the commissioners? Okay. So seeing done, I am going to open this up for public comment. And. Oh, I thought he was presenting for that. Okay, so. Okay, um, the director suggested that we have the applicants present at this time. And instead of having them at the end. So I will open this up for the applicants of these two projects to speak at this time.
Chair.
Yes.
I just have a question, would they be able to then refute or talk at the end as well?
I'll let them come back. I generally, we have them at the end, so that's already taken care of. But I'll let them come back after public comment.
Thank you.
In this case. Okay, so is either of the applicants here, I see one hand up, Ashley Smith is, so go ahead, Ashley. I don't know if she's an applicant or not, so. Are you there, Ashley?
Hello, thank you. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. So good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ashley Smith, a site acquisition representative for Epic Wireless Group, working on behalf of AT&amp;T Mobility. This evening, our office is presenting a new site build located in the Arcata Bottoms to provide sufficient coverage to this community. This call will include both Andrew, Lisa, and myself from Epic Wireless, as well as Donna Davis, representing AT&amp;T Mobility. Our office has evaluated several locations in this area and found that a one hundred foot water tank would be the least intrusive means to fill AT&amp;T's service gap. After an analysis on both towers, AT&amp;T's radio frequency engineers have determined that a ninety foot rad center at the current location is preferred over the available one hundred and thirty foot rad center on the lattice tower. This is due to the tower being situated closer to the residents of Arcata and the surrounding roads and highway. This tower is the least intrusive as the tower has a much lower height, a hundred feet. And that also stealth as a fox, a full water tank. The water tank will be structurally sound to allow co-location for a total of three carriers. So two of which that will be concealed by our screening mimicking that of a water tank. While the third carrier would be proposed on the legs of the tower. Our office also submitted photo simulations of a broadleaf design to the planning department for review back in October. AT&amp;T's forecast for this project is to be on air as soon as possible. Thus, if approved, our office would submit quickly into the building department for review and approval. As AT&amp;T has a master lease agreement with majority of the major carriers. AT, AT&amp;T is on air, this will trigger a need for the other carriers to be in the area. And thus a need for them to co-locate on the existing AT&amp;T tower. We appreciate the opportunity to present this proposal this evening and would request planning commission support of this project to help increase communication coverage to the community. Please let me know if you have any questions regarding AT&amp;T's proposal. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the commission or the applicant here? Uh, Mike, go ahead.
I just want to ask Ashley about why they prefer that location versus the other location. To co relocate onto the one that's behind the big building. She just indicated it was just closer to residences. And I thought some of the residences were asking about, you know, frequencies and all of that. And the look closer to their homes.
So we, as a team at Epic Wireless Group, worked with AT&amp;T's radio frequency engineers. And they did indicate that that ninety foot rad center was a better location in order to reach the community of Arcatas and Arcata Bottoms and the highway to the east. When we did evaluate that a hundred and thirty foot rad center, it did not provide sufficient coverage for AT&amp;T's needs in this area.
Melanie, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. What is the level of need that you established for the area? So is there a significant difference in terms of access for that particular area relative to other areas?
Relative to the other tower location, yes. It does provide again, more coverage towards that highway to the east and to the community, the north and the south. It's, it's just better coverage overall at that ninety foot rad center versus the other tower location. And, and the need for this area, usually what happens is there's. Not a lot of people that are able to use AT&amp;T's facilities and, and, you know, coverage and capacity. And that's when AT&amp;T determines the need in this area. And that's what occurred when we were vetting the properties in this area.
Okay, well, having done a little bit of research and having been with you, AT&amp;T for six years, I think, myself. I, I think the only area really that had sort of spotty access was the HSU campus. So is this primarily to serve the HSU campus?
This tower would serve a little bit of the HSU, but I believe AT&amp;T is already on that campus as well. And it's a little further, I believe, northeast of this tower.
Okay, and have you addressed the. The considerable pushback, I guess, from the community in terms of saying that nobody really feels they need more access?
Yeah, so you know, AT&amp;T comes and they realize there is a significant gap in services and coverage and capacity. And AT&amp;T wants to construct this facility. And that's, you know.
This meeting is being recorded.
Engineers and, you know.
Okay, but you don't have a quantification in terms of the degree to which access is poor?
We are just told that there is a lack of coverage in this area. And usually how we find, how AT&amp;T finds us out is there's AT&amp;T customers in the area not getting sufficient coverage or capacity. And that's when the office are reached out to, we need, there's a need for the service in this area. There's a huge gap whenever I visit, I'm unable to use my cellular devices or internet or anything in regards to that. So that's where our office steps in and we find a feasible and viable location for the community to offer these services.
Right, I was just asking if you had quantified that in terms of how many customers are saying they don't have access or what your engineers found. And, and how much access in terms of the quality? Do you have any numbers on that?
Unfortunately, I do not have numbers on that. I can definitely get those for the next meeting, I believe, August fifth.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Noah, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for that presentation. I just wanted to, to ask, I just wanted to make sure that I heard you correctly. Because one, as you know, we are considering two different alternative proposals here. And my understanding from what I had read and heard previously was that the AT&amp;T tower would allow for co-location of two carriers only. Whereas the other proposal we're, we're going to hear more about would allow for four carriers to be co-located. But if I. would allow for four carriers to be co-located, but if I heard you correctly, uh, Ms. Smith, you spoke of locating three carriers on your tower, can you just confirm that I heard you correctly?
That's correct, so there would be uh, room for two carriers within the water tank. So the faux water tank portion, so those would be completely concealed and an available rad center um, for another set of antennas or another carrier located on the legs of the, the lattice uh, tower of that water tank.
I see, okay, I didn't see that, that ability to uh, accommodate a third carrier reflected in the staff report, so I'm glad that you were able to make that clear for us.
Yes, of course, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mike, I, do you have your hand back up or was that still up?
No, it was a follow-up to the questions that.
Okay, good.
The other, the other two questions, um, follow-up with, with what Noah was talking about was, okay, the third carrier is on a lower tier and outside of the faux water tower. How is the uh, signals there um, on that third carrier is my first question, then I have another question.
Okay, yep, so um, our rad center, antennas, is that 90 foot? We could potentially have another uh, carrier, I believe at 80 feet and then most likely another carrier around 60 feet, so it would be above the tree line in that area and it would still be able to provide sufficient coverage for the third carrier.
But AT&amp;T would not be that third one down on the line, is that correct?
That's correct, because AT&amp;T is proposing the tower and our radio frequency engineers would always want the, the top rad center.
Right, okay, so my main question that I was following up on was how much will it cost AT&amp;T to locate over to the alternative tower as opposed to this one that you're proposing?
Um, so can't really uh, talk too much business terms, but uh, we did previously reach out to the other tower owner and unfortunately the findings for co-location on the tower determine that the terms and conditions are not commercially viable for AT&amp;T, so it, it's necessary for AT&amp;T to construct their own tower to benefit the area of Humboldt County. Uh, it could be a part of negotiations and it would be um, in AT&amp;T's best interest to construct the facility.
With one out, one other carrier and possibly two AT&amp;T being the top, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions from staff before I open this up to the public? Seeing none, I am now, oh. Go ahead, Peggy, I didn't.
I'm just curious, I, I have a little bit of experience with these communication towers and I never found anybody willing to come in and put one up and we were always begging people, so I'm curious, how come two people all of a sudden at once, two towers are being proposed and um, if you're saying you can put someone at 60, 80, 90, um, then the other one wants to be at 130, so they have the potential of probably adding even more people in the future. I, I just, does anybody have any input on why all of a sudden two at once?
Would Ashley or Andrew like to take that question? Go ahead. Are you there, Ashley?
Oh, my apologies. Yes, again, there was a need in uh, coverage in this area and AT&amp;T is ready to construct this tower and be the first carrier in this area um, to provide this coverage. Um, I am certain of the, if there's co-location opportunities on the other tower, but AT&amp;T, you know, once constructed, will be on air right away and will be able to provide the, the service and the coverage to the community. So again, there is a need in this area um, for AT&amp;T services.
The director would like to add a comment.
It's in response to Commissioner O'Neal, O'Neal's question. When this application was being reviewed, uh, we were concerned that the alternatives analysis did not look at the site of the old timber um, mill and asked if that be looked at. There was a previous application on that site that goes back many, many years and through that process, it was discovered that there was also a uh, a tower owner, builder, that had a lease on that site. And so they immediately submitted the application. And so that's why we have brought them both together at one time and allowed them to be evaluated uh, based upon the merits of each and to give direction on which one better suits the community.
Thank you, Director. Okay, any other questions for staff or the director before I open this up to the public?
Alan.
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
Were you going to allow PWM to put input or were they deferring entirely until the end?
I don't know, I don't see any, but is, it, it, okay, then I would ask PWM to, to now take the floor and, and give us their proposal. Show up as attendees then? Or a person?
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, Ainsley Parks with Tom McMurray, who's PWM owner.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners, I am Tom McMurray, representing PWM Incorporated of Cityville's Towers Company. I have with me my granddaughter, Ainsley Parks, who has produced the location maps, maps, photo sims, alternative site analysis, and other information. Ainsley is here and available to answer any questions on these documents. I will try to be brief as we have submitted this information to the staff, planning commission, and the public through the Exela Humboldt site. Let me first explain that this is a 4G LTE proposal, it is not 5G. We clearly identified in the antenna list submitted, 4G LTE offers more capacity, more reliable and faster data speeds up to 10 times 3G 3G status. We did include information on 5G as it could be installed there in the future, so if it would be identified at that time, to give some background information on the importance of towers with additional co-location opportunities, I go back to 1991 when we at CalNorth Cellular were permitted by the county to install a tower at Humboldt Hill. At that time, there were two cell carriers in the county, United States Cellular and CalNorth Cellular. We debated on how large a tower to build with only two carriers in the market and with the county staff's encouragement, we decided to go ahead and design a tower to allow other carriers to co-locate there. Then constructed 140-foot tower, today, 30 years later, there are four cell carriers there, including AT&amp;T and other wireless equipment, no new towers have been required to be constructed in that area. With the past conditions placed on new towers over the previous years and several public workshops, many planning commission and board of supervisors, public hearings, the county general plan was adopted in 2017. We now have a general plan in the chapter six telecommunications section that regulates and gives clear guidelines on what the county may permit for tower locations. We believe by following these guidelines and regulations, we have complied with the mass maximum extent feasible for the Sun Valley location. These items includes items 6A through F, and I'll just go over that quickly to emphasize that the Sun Valley site is also zoned heavy industrial, is not in a wetland, as the other site. It is not in an exclusive uh, zone, which has not been mentioned. Our opinion over the years has been that there was no net loss of ag land permitted, especially for a tower location. Neither was there no net loss of wetlands over the years for a tower location. This is why we were directed and follow the telecommunications uh, within the general plan, we think we have complied with those. This would include the tiered permitting utilized permit processes that vary depending upon the physical characteristics. We have a track record of following all permitting procedures to build co-location facilities and compliance with specific development and performance standards within Humboldt County. We have a developed industrial site with existing roads, power facilities, previously graded and improved. Any excess soil will be stored on the property. Site co-location, the site location is adjacent to and on incorporated into existing buildings and structures. The four-legged self-support lattice design accommodates a total of four wireless carriers for co-location to the maximum extent feasible. The proposed tower has a loading capacity to allow each carrier 12 antennas, 24 radios, two search protectors, and the associated mounts and cabling. The size of the ground space, existing access roads and available on-site power will prevent ongoing operations without additional infrastructure requirements. Safety, we are required to provide radio frequency studies both for the initial carrier and cumulative studies for each carrier afterwards. The location and siding of the proposed Sun Valley site is shielded by trees. Building heights are difficult to see for most public roads, developed areas of the city of Arcata and surrounding improvements. We have been asked why we could not locate on adjoining properties, these properties are in the majority zone agricultural exclusive with open water courses, wetlands, access issues, and other environmental issues. In the information presented in the telecommunications section, we did not see any policies that would give us any guidance or encouragement to locate a tower of any type or design in an agricultural exclusive zone with wetlands and other possible environmental impacts. As a result of our past alternative site investigations in the telecommunications section, we did not look further into sites identified with those conditions, even with a faux design. Neither did we look at presenting a water tank design at our site. For four carriers, we estimated that the tank would have to be 54 feet in height and up to 16 to 18 feet in diameter and would have been a mammoth structure not seen even close in the historical bottoms area. To clear the adjoining buildings, it would have to project at least 55 feet over the roof. We did find a water tower in the historical records at the Arcata Goph of a height of the 40-foot range. We have also produced coverage studies by FES, an international firm that is recognized as a leader for these types of tasks. They have concluded in their summary letter that we submitted that our site is 119 to 157% better in coverage than the alternative site being presented, depending upon the locations listed there. We have submitted many studies and other information for reviews of staff and the public on the Exela Humboldt site. Thank you for the opportunity to submit this information online available and Ainsley is available for any questions.
All right, thank you, Tom. Is there any questions from the commission, Cliff has his hand up, I'll let him, go ahead, Cliff.
Um, thank you, Chair Bongio, uh, and I'm gonna ask uh, Mr. Millar to, to respond as well, but I do believe, I just wanted to clarify that uh, the AT&amp;T site um, did, I believe, submit an environmental assessment that shows that, that those are not wetlands where this is proposed, so I just wanted to clarify that and I'm just asking Mr. Millar to correct me or uh, expand on that if, if need be.
Thank you, Cliff, and, and the answer is, is yes, um, and um, there was an environmental assessment, uh, biological assessment prepared that AT&amp;T had done through environmental assessment specialists and they looked at the potential for special status species and plant and animal species and, and basically the, the findings came back negative, they also did a, a look at whether or not this might contain waters of the US uh, or wetlands and they found that the site did not, this particular area for the footprint didn't have any, any hydrophytic uh, plant uh, species and so based on that is just one of the key criteria, it, it wouldn't meet the requirement for, 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 for wetlands and so the applicant may have further information on that as well, but I'll, I'll confirm what, what Mr. Johnson had just mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Mike, I see you have your hand up, I was, I thought I unmuted, but I didn't.
Nope, so I did. Um, thank you, Chair, um, my question to WM is to give us a little perspective about if it was approved at the 130-foot height that was proposed, uh, what would be the lowest height on the fourth carrier down proposed to say the AT&amp;T proposed site?
Are you there, Tom? Ainsley?
Yeah.
There you go, um, so the top carrier is at 130, the second 115, the third at 100, and the fourth and lowest carrier at 85.
You're muted, Mike.
Sorry, I tried to, I'm trying to be a good guy and unmute and mute when I'm not talking. So um, what is the top height of AT&amp;Ts and the second and then the third? Uh, maybe staff can help me out on that?
Uh, maybe I can start, uh, Commissioner Rubin, um, the, the two the two carriers that, that were identified um, uh, as going and would be within the upper reaches and that tank again is from about 75 feet up to 100 feet, but those would be interior to the site. Uh, what I don't have is information relative to a third potential carrier that could be mounted exterior to the water tank somewhere on the support lattice legs and so I'd have to defer to the applicant on that.
He below that, though.
Thank you, Brian, uh, this is Ashley with Epic Wireless Group and the top carrier, so AT&amp;T would be at the 90-foot rad center. The second carrier would be at an 80-foot rad center and the third would be approximately about 60 feet rad center. Thank you.
Thank you. So is there any other panelists that would like to ask questions at this time, if not, I'm not seeing any hands up, so I'd like to open this up to the public. Okay, and the director, I, there's an Andrew Les, I don't know if you're part of the, one of the applicants or you're hi. Go ahead.
Henry?
Yeah, we can hear you now, go ahead, Andrew.
Great, thank you, hi, uh, good evening, commissioners, my name is Andrew Lisa, I'm with Epic Wireless, I do well represent uh, AT&amp;T Mobility along with Ashley Smith, so I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak uh, to some of these matters this evening. If I could have a moment, I, I did want to just address a couple of comments. You know, I think one of the things we want to keep in perspective here is the and the ultimate goal here is to improve cell service to this community. And that's something, you know, some of the commissioners were asking, how is AT&amp;T quantifying that? Although I don't have a specific number of users currently, what we have done, we provided this to staff, our application has provided coverage maps that demonstrate the significant gap in coverage that's identified by AT&amp;T. So that's the coverage and capacity gap that currently exists for that community and there is a a need for improved service from AT&amp;T in order to fill their significant gap in coverage. One of the important things again to remember is that the, the goal here is to improve cell service. AT&amp;T's proposal will do that, AT&amp;T's facility comes with a proposed cell site located. We are not proposing a tower, we are proposing a cell facility that improves communication for both residents, travelers, and as well as first responders. We have worked very diligently and are a part of a federally funded program for FirstNet that allows AT&amp;T to offer communication services dedicated to first responders. That means in times of fire, in times of emergencies, the network won't bog down for our first responders. That means in times of fire, in times of emergencies, the network won't bog down for our first responders. The network will not be under natural disasters impacted, and the first responders will allow continued communication in the most important times of need. So the AT&amp;T facility is an improvement to the community. It's an asset to the community. As Ashley Smith had mentioned, we did, at the request of staff, evaluate the other facility that's being proposed this evening by PWM. The way I understand it, AT&amp;T had applied for an application that you're under review this evening before there was a PWM facility being proposed. Staff had asked PWM if they're moving forward with a facility that they had once supplied application information to the city, excuse me, to the county some 10 years ago. That is why we are discussing an alternative site at PWM that was not originally evaluated in our alternative site analysis. It did not exist. After evaluating the PWM facility and having diligent conversations with regards to business, it was determined that it is not a feasible location for AT&amp;T under the current terms. So what we're evaluating tonight is potentially increasing service for the community through an AT&amp;T facility or potentially approving a facility that, to date, to my understanding, and Mr. McMurray can correct me if I'm wrong, does not offer improved service to the community, but rather a tower that will be available should someone, should some carrier licensed by FCC be interested in co-locating. Thank you. I appreciate your time. I'm more than welcome to answer questions I have.
Okay. I'm going to ask a question that just popped up, and this might be a question for the director, but why are we having to pick one project or the other? Why aren't these both standalone projects that we could be voting on both of them? I'm not really clear on what that, why that is.
I mean, that is an option that the commission can consider. I think one of the general plan policies seeks to limit the number of telecommunications facilities. And so recognizing that there are the, the potential to be two fairly tall telecommunications facilities within eyesight of each other, it, in staff's opinion, that in order to comply with the general plan, that really we should focus on one. But if the commission wishes to approve the both, that is an option.
All right. That answers the question. Thank you.
I would add that I think Mr. Johnson could walk through the coverage maps from AT&amp;T to show the need. That's something that the commission's been asking about, and that may be helpful in this particular case.
If he has those ready to go, we can do that now before we open it up to the public. But I want to get to public comment here soon.
Sure. If, just let me know when I can share my screen and show you some of the.
Go ahead.
All right. So you should be seeing some coverage maps here. They're maybe a little hard to, to kind of see based on the scale. But you see in the center the word Arcata. And obviously, as you move a little bit to the west from there, you're heading out towards the, the Arcata Bottoms, the area that we're talking about. So, you know, the green is showing where there's existing reliable service, both indoors and outdoors with the existing AT&amp;T towers. The yellow is showing some, some areas that have a little less reliable coverage. And then the blue, which is a lot of the other areas that you're not seeing, is showing where the reliable coverage is outdoors only. And so I think the, and AT&amp;T can probably speak to this a little bit more, but the idea is to try to expand that indoor coverage. This is also just showing a little bit different areas here and then showing an existing cell tower that's in the, to the northwest. And this is showing the existing cell tower to the south. And like, I'll stop sharing my screen now, or you can let me know when.
That's fine. Thank you, Cliff. All right. So we've got a lot of information. Let's.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Tom McMurray. Henninino State that PWM had a site 10 years ago in that area is incorrect. That site was a U.S. cellular site. We have also produced very qualified site coverage maps that show that our site has a superior coverage footprint. So I just wanted to put that in the record. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to now open this up for public comment so that we can see if there's anybody that has any thoughts on this. And then I will ask the two applicants to come back on after the public comment, and then we will close public comment. So are there, is there any public that wishes to speak on this issue at this time? First caller is 2902, please. Go ahead, star six to unmute.
Hello, Commissioners. Lisa Brown from Arcata. I am opposed to both of the proposed cellular towers before you tonight. In 2003, there was a similar tower proposed not far from these two towers. The tower in 2003 was denied by the Board of Supervisors on appeal by the City of Arcata. At the time, the city requested a moratorium for cell towers on the bottoms until, and I quote, "A comprehensive study of wireless communications needs and alternative methods of meeting those needs can be developed, evaluated, and implemented for the Arcata planning area." They also asked that absent an ordinance, the county conduct an EIR for any tower proposed to address numerous concerns brought forth by the community. At the time, same as today, there were concerns about the tower's impact on migrating birds in the area, the impacted dairy cow milk production due to decreased melatonin levels caused by EMFs, and concerns that the county did not have setbacks to residences, schools, and other sensitive inhabited areas or monitoring of ongoing EMF emissions. I submitted a two-page sheet called Attachment A outlining options for telecommunications regulations that the county worked on subsequent to that denial. This study and subsequent ordinance has yet to be created and yet was promised. The general plan policies do not replace this need. Any cellular tower proposed for the Arcata Bottom should require an EIR in the absence of this ordinance. Currently, there is an empty tower on South G Street in Arcata with a direct shot to Arcata, the highway, the hills, Bayside, et cetera. Co-location is required by the general plan. I would like the Planning Commission to require better documentation than provided as to why this tower is not being utilized for the carriers. Given the concerns of migratory birds, dairy production, no net loss of agricultural lands, visual impacts proximity to residences and schools, lack of a comprehensive needs assessment and site analysis, as well as a lack of an ongoing monitoring plan, I believe it near impossible to make a finding of compatibility absent an environmental document. And I ask that the commission require an initial study to determine what environmental issues are present in the sensitive area of Arcata's sphere and, and do a environmental document following that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is 7454. Go ahead, 7454.
Thank you. I think I'm unmuted now after three tries. I did wish to make one comment regarding what's happening and not happening today in your thing. There was a similar project in Soham in the zoning administrator's meeting, and you won't hear that. I requested it be brought to you. And so you may wish to be aware of things of that, this time you're spending on this. Might have been necessary. There was no staff report and, and apparently outreach in Soham. And people don't understand rural outreach. People don't get the paper. They don't get notice. So anyway, I just wanted to make note of that so you're aware that did go through today in that particular forum. It's, to me, it was, it was, this is an interesting one, of course. The prior speaker seemed to have her ducks in a row as far as her comments go, and I won't make comment on that. But I do, I do see AT&amp;T's comment was the conditions weren't right. And I guess those are conditions or terms of revel for this thing. I always like competition. I think competition's good. I hate to see one person kind of controlling this whole thing. It sounds like maybe the McMurrays, they did this, particularly, just build the towers and then leave space so they're not actually having a, a thing of their own, which might be a monopoly there. I would like to see whatever project you adopt, adopt, if any, be the one that allows the most people to hook up and competition to run as free as we can. And so those are my concerns. It's always good to have the competition. Thanks for opportunity. I guess I'd let you know I did not pull a whole bunch of those things off a consent. A lot of those were pulled by other people. So thank you for opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ken. Is there any other public that wishes to speak on this item? Yes, public 9729. Go ahead, 9729. Star six to unmute. There we go.
Hi, I live in the Arcata Bottoms, and we, like Lisa Brown said, the first speaker, we already fought this fight in 2003, and it doesn't seem fair that we as a community are being asked to fight the same fight again. Nobody wants to have a cell phone tower in their neighborhood, and you've already passed one of the largest grows in the whole county in the Bottoms, which includes the use of a product to mitigate odor that's questionable for the safety of humans. And the American Cancer Society says that the most expert organizations agree that more research is needed to help clarify whether the radio frequency waves are absolutely safe, especially for any possible long-term effects. So I'm asking you, please don't turn the Arcata Bottoms into an industrial wasteland. I don't know why we get this idea, the Arcata Bottoms, you can just dump any garbage you want here. We live in a beautiful, peaceful country setting, and those of us who live here would like very much to keep it that way. It sounds like from what Lisa says, there's a better place to, to put this. There's already tower established, so why not use it? And if you must grant a permit, at the very least, maybe you could camouflage it as a tree. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller is public 2934.
Thank you for taking my call tonight. My name is Karen Sackey, and I am representing my mother Shirley Butler and family, property owners of the proposed A&amp;T site on Arcata Bottoms. However, first, I would like to add, Lane de Breeze is a neighbor adjoining our property to the west of us. We have worked on fencing and major concerns, and he has been definitely a good neighbor. My mother Shirley Butler would like to add some history to this project. One of the first water towers was established on her property, which was the Nelson Ranch 200 years ago in the year 1850 by Augusta Nelson. When my mother was asked by AT&amp;T on what design she would like, it was definitely a water tower as it stood 200 years ago. In talking to many of the ranchers on Arcata Bottoms and in the outlining areas, they all felt it went well with ag land and were accepting the project and excited. However, most important, one of Mrs. Butler's concerns was the safety of our community for students, visitors, and emergency responders. As it stands, we have many gaps in the reception in this area. Mrs. Butler's property has been maintained properly and environmentally for 200 years. Mrs. Butler was concerned about the environment and AT&amp;T services. AT&amp;T took direct action promptly with her, answering her questions and concerns to her satisfaction that she saw the need for AT&amp;T service in our area.
You have 30.
Pardon?
30 seconds, ma'am.
Okay, we are hoping for AT&amp;T services for visitors, students in the community, and emergency services as needed. Mrs. Butler would like to thank the community for their support, AT&amp;T, and we hope you will welcome AT&amp;T in our area. They are set and ready to go. Thank you very much.
4899, star six to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. My name is Lisa Teleteer. I'm calling to request that you oppose this project on the basis of the health impacts to the community. There is one letter that I read from a physician, Dr. David Carpenter, a public health physician who is dean of the School of Public Health at the University of Albany and has edited two books on the impacts of EMFs. And he says there is clear and strong evidence that the radiation from cell towers increases the risk of cancer, especially brain cancer. Studies from several countries report elevated risks of cancer, especially leukemia, in children living near a cell tower. And Dr. Carpenter also said that some people, including children, are exceptionally sensitive to EMFs and experience headaches, brain fog, and reduced ability to learn. There are two schools near this, these cell towers. This project does not belong so close to neighborhoods and schools, and I respectfully request that you reject both towers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller is 2089, public 2089.
Hi, this is, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Can't tell if I'm on. My name is Beverly Phillip, and I'm calling to ask you to oppose both of these projects. You know, as I understand it, based on the previous application that, I think it was 2003, the county made a decision not to put up towers in that area for various reasons, including environmental reasons. And it, you know, it feels like the burden is being put on the public here to show that, to hold the county to their word. I mean, there, there was a decision that was made, and it just, I didn't hear any questions about or discussion about that decision in the, in the, the discussion that you guys have all had tonight. So, you know, the, the location has shown to be, been shown to be a problem in the past, and a decision was made based on that, and now that seems like it's just being ignored. So there are real reasons why that decision happened, and I would, I think that needs some investigation. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Is there any other public that wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public comment now, and I'll. That was her. It wasn't?
No, it wasn't.
Oh, I apologize. I thought I wrote that, I wrote 2080. Oh, I, I apologize. I thought I wrote that, I, I wrote two, oh, eight, oh, so they were really close. I apologize. Uh, public two, oh, eight, nine, star six, unmute yourself. I apologize that I cut you off. Are you there? Okay. I thought that I, that, that I had a nine. I think it was the same person. So with that, I'm going to close the, the public comment. I'm going to bring it back to the commission. So I think the director also would like to make a comment about that last speaker.
And we tried to do some research. We'd heard that there was a, uh, uh, some kind of action taken about a previous application. Our, our research showed from several sources that what had happened was that, uh, that ultimately was put into the general plan. The general plan calls for an ordinance to be established. Um, I've not actually gone back and found any kind of a moratorium. Although honestly, we have not searched for a moratorium adopted in 2003. And I don't want to conclusively say there wasn't one without having specifically looked for that.
All right. Thank you, Director. So does anybody have any thoughts on this one?
Were we going to, um, excuse me, Chair, um, were we gonna let P W M and A T and T respond?
If they put their hand up and want to make another comment, I will honor that, but I didn't see them. So I, that's why I brought it back to the commission and I'll let them speak now as, as a panelist as well. So I will give that opportunity. Okay.
I have Tom McMurray.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I just a couple of comments. Number one, uh, P W M and the Pacific Coast Towers has master lease agreements, uh, with all the major carriers. That entices them because of lower rates to locate on all our tappers. That's the first point. The second point is we cannot market a site unless we have a permitted site. Uh, and that's what we're trying to do here is to basically get a site that we can market for many carriers, four carriers at least, that the county has put forward as a necessity to eliminate multiple towers. The second thing is, is that we are working with, with DISH, uh, network on the rollout of their new cellular, uh, facility, uh, process. So we are in direct contact with them. There, there are a lot of people, uh, companies that would like to get in this business, including major, major companies. And so I think you need to have a facility that is available for that. And, uh, we are trying to provide that and meet all of the regulations that we have tried to, to, uh, be able to meet through all the general plan requirements and that telecommunication, uh, number six, uh, in the, in the general plan. And I think we've done that and, uh, I would certainly like to have the, uh, commission consider our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Um, and then I'm going to ask, uh, Andrew Lesa from A T and T to speak.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, uh, just as a point of clarification, A T and T does not have a master lease agreement uh, in place currently, W N. So, um, there may be other carriers. A T and T is not one of them. I would also just want to reiterate that A T and T is proposing improved service right now in the moment with this project. We're not in discussion with anyone. We're not trying to negotiate a deal. We have leased property and are ready to move forward with a building permit and are eager to have this site constructed to begin serving the community as soon as possible with improved cell service. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any thoughts from the commission? Go ahead, Mike.
Well, one of the last, um, speakers, public speakers, uh, was talking about, um, availability on a tower. I wanted to ask staff about that and, um, who is within that tower?
Staff wanna, somebody want to answer that question? I don't know who it's necessarily for. I think it's the radio or at the old-
Well, there actually is a cell tower, um, that is down, I think on South G Street. And I, I believe A T and T may be there. Um, as I recall, there were discussions about where their towers were. This is to fill a specific void, um, within the, the bottoms and then up towards Arcata.
Not sure why we're getting that, but okay. Did that answer your question, Mike?
Uh, yes, it did. Um, so, uh, one of my comments and I'll, uh, reserve another comment. Um, but it kinda was telling, uh, with the representative from A T and T, um, when I asked about, you know, if pricing and, and that sort of thing, why, um, if it was, um, available on the P W M tower and he responded with not feasible along current terms. Um, I hate to see, um, one company, uh, put a tower up when in our general plan, we've got the, uh, request uh, by the public and it through mi- uh, very men- very many, um, meetings that, um, we want to see as many as available as possible, uh, available on single towers, uh, not to have numerous towers, um, around with just, you know, one or two carriers, um, because of blight, visual blight. And, um, I, I really, I like the idea of a water tower, but I understand, um, with the covering of the P W M tower over there by the, um, commercial building there, it, it is very, um, shielded, uh, from many, um, with visual blight. And I believe that probably that would be the better of the two. And I know that 2003 versus 2021, uh, there are very many more, uh, cell needs available um, in our area for wireless communications, um, than what it was back in oh, three. Uh, so that we need to look forward, um, and not look backwards. Um, there was different extenuating circumstances, I'm sure, back in oh, three. Um, and I'm sure that they were fine. Um, but here it is, 2021. We are going more wireless as a, a community, as a, a nation, as, uh, you know, humanity progresses here. Um, and I'd like to see probably, um, if we're going to approve something, I think, uh, we should approve, uh, the tower, uh, that P W M is proposing and then, um, let them lease it out. Um, it's, it's, um, going to be available and, um, would be available for the free market. So that's my first remarks there at this point. Thank you.
Noah or Melanie, you had your hand up first and then Noah.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm still not entirely convinced that there is a, a need, but that's, um, I guess, uh, another point. But, uh, given that we are looking at these two, um, and they've met the requirements, I agree with Commissioner Newman on the last point. My feeling is that we should, um, look at the one that will provide the most access using the most, um, the, uh, different, you know, the most, um, carriers possible. So, uh, what I'm thinking with that is that there's now, uh, the possibility to have home internet through cell. I just recently got it, having had almost no cellular or no internet access at all. And, um, you know, for kids and for, for everybody, I think that having something that would potentially be available for home internet cell access, which is new, um, would be the way to go because, uh, that is something that I think there is a need for. That's it.
Thank you, Melanie. Uh, Noah? Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, also give my thoughts, which I, I think largely follow what, what has already been said by, uh, Commissioner Newman and Commissioner McCaver. But, um, uh, while I would much prefer to see, um, I, I would really, I, I think that the A T and T, um, uh, project has a strong selling point in, in that it can in fact say, we will, we will go in and put, uh, in, install the coverage immediately upon approval of this project. If we approve the A T and T, um, site, um, based on the fact that the P W M tower seems to, uh, accommodate a greater number of carriers, um, does in fact seem to have a greater coverage area, uh, based on my understanding of the documents that we received and based on the fact that it's taller. I, I would agree that it is the, oh, and based on its location being further west and further remote from schools and the core residential areas. Um, I, I, I'm fairly familiar with that location and I, I do feel that it would be visually screened to a large extent, being behind the existing Sun Valley, um, buildings. And finally, as somebody who spends quite a bit of time in the western part of Arcata, I will, on two different, uh, cell phone devices with different carriers, I will say that I personally do feel that there is a need for additional cell coverage in that western Arcata area. So, um, yes, but I'm, I'm coming out leaning towards favoring the P W N, um, uh, tower simply because of its greater capacity and its location. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other commissioners that wish to speak? Oh, go ahead. I didn't see them. Go ahead, Thomas.
Hello, um, so I would also support the, the idea of the most providers available. Although I would just like to note, I have like a personal issue with cell phone towers being as they are commercial activity and many places I am aware of, they are not he- held to the same commercial road standards as cannabis or other commercial activities within Humboldt County. So at some point in time, I would love to sort that issue out. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and Peggy, did you have your, I don't see-
Yeah, I did.
Okay, go ahead.
For a lot of years, I worked on trying to get carriers interested in building communication towers because, you know, on the Urock Reservation, they had no coverage. And I can assure you that A T and T is not coming in and building a tower and spending, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to build one unless there's a need. And so, um, you know, I don't have any problem with understanding there's a need. And just a minute. And I'm babysitting my daughter.
These dogs.
I'm babysitting these dogs. So anyway, um, I, I'm sure that there's a need and, and I know, and I don't know in this particular area because I don't live in Arcata, but I know even in Eureka and other areas, families have had a real difficult time with, um, you know, having multiple children in school and having to do, um, home schooling and not being able to have all their kids going to school at the same time at home. So I'm all for heights also that, you know, if you're going to build a tower, it's a tower. You can disguise it all you want, but it's still a tower. And really the higher the tower, the better because it gives you the ability to, um, you know, get the most coverage. And if you're going to have one, you might as well have one that works because, you know, I've been forced to build shorter towers because that's what the community wanted. And then they end, you have to put up another or two more towers just to be able to, um, you know, get the coverage you need because it's not tall enough. So I'm all for tall towers, get over with and, you know, provide the services to the community. So I would support, you know, the hundred and thirty foot tower and I don't care if it's disguised. It's a tower and that's the world we live in now. And it like, it was said previously, it's only going to be more communication in the future. Um, so that's, that's my idea.
All right. Thank you, Peggy. Well, I'm going to take a shot at this. I agree with just about every comment I've heard from my fellow commissioners and from the public and from the applicants. I know a little bit about these. I have property that has a tower on it. Um, one of the things that I've thought from the beginning, and this is from personal experience, uh, I like the idea of it being on the P W M site, which is Sun Valley, uh, because it's an industrial site one and it is already a site that, uh, exists and there will be people around because, um, as good offenses as you can put up, the criminals always seem to figure out a way to get over them. Um, so the chances of that happening on a vacant agricultural piece of land are much greater in my opinion than if you have a site like the, where the P W M tower would be, where there's going to be workers around. So if something's going on there, they're gonna, I'm sure, get wind of it. Uh, there is security on these things. There's, uh, one of the, the power issues. Um, I'm sure the power source is there already for this and it can be developed at the other one. There's no question, but it, in my opinion, uh, the P W M project is the superior project because of where it would be sited. I, I would like to have discussion, uh, maybe it could be brought back to us as to, if we're going to put up a tower and I agree with, we don't need towers everywhere. So if we're going to put up one, should this tower be even taller? If that, if we could get more carriers on it so that down the road, we're not having this discussion again about needing another tower because all the, all the spaces are filled up on that tower. Um, so I think that that is a discussion that needs to, to be had as well. I think I'll leave it at that, but I think that the P W M, and it sounds like across from all the commissioners, that tend to be the, what I picked up on. So, um, anyhow, any other thoughts from the commission? We're not supposed to make a motion on this. We're just giving you direction on this, correct?
Yeah, but we would ask you to continue it to August fifth.
So we will have to have a motion to continue this and reference of the one we want you to-
I, I, I think we've heard the commission's, um, comments.
A motion to continue the item till August fifth.
All right, we have a motion.
Well, second, and I'd like to comment that the higher, um, alternative, um, that we've seen, I've seen, uh, in some emails about a hundred and fifty feet and a hundred and forty feet, um, as current towers that that may be looked at as well and brought back on that report.
Right. So we have a motion, a second, any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Please, Laura.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy? Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Ryan Mitchell? Still out? Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Uh, um, so before we move on to the next one, we usually take a break about fifty minutes ago. So, um, let's take a, a quick break and come back, uh, at eight o'clock or a little bit before and, uh, we'll get to the next item. All right. Thank you, everybody. See you in a minute.
The recording has stopped.
Back everybody. Um, and as you can see, item number two on the continued public hearings has been continued. So we will skip past item number two, the Humboldt Empire Farms LLC special permit and move on to item number three. and move on to item number three. And that is the zoning ordinance amendments to the Commercial Cannabis Land Use Ordinance, CCLUO, record ID number PLN dash two zero two one dash one seven one four seven. And we will take a staff report, please. Are we getting the staff? Yeah, hey, hey, Michael, are you there? I figured Cliff was doing this one. Bear with us. Yeah, he's our last commissioner.
Sorry about that all. Michael Richards, Jr. with the Planning Department. And what's before you this evening is sort of four proposed amendments to the can- Commercial Cannabis Land Use Ordinance, the CCLUO. First, we are recommending the adding a requirement that an application proposing relocation for two or more retire- retirement remediation and relocation or RRRR sites on a single receiving site has to get a discretionary special permit. This would require a public hearing and would enable the decision to be appealed to the Board of Supervisors consistent with the board's direction recently. These RRRR amendments would be applicable to all zoning clearance certificate applications for RRRR sites and relocation sites, including those submitted on or before December thirty first, two thousand sixteen. Part two of this amendment package proposes an update to the definition for outdoor cultivation to allow the use of lights of sixty watts or less per one hundred square feet of canopy area for employee safety and or to maintain plants in a non-flowering vegetative state in the area approved for cultivation. Presently, the ordinance allows no artificial lighting to be used for outdoor cultivation. Related to this proposed, is a proposed clarification to the definition of mixed light cultivation to distinguish the artificial lighting used for mixed light operations from the low watt lighting being allowed for the outdoor cannabis operations. The third part of this amendment package specifies a limit on the area used for propagation that may be allowed in addition to and not counted toward the cultivation area. The propagation is for the purpose of raising immature plants. We're 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 proposing allowing propagation areas to occupy up to twenty-five percent of the square footage of the cultivation area at the discretion of the Planning Commission or the Planning Director for zoning clearance if it gets. Finally, the last part of the proposed amendment package is to not apply enhanced setback requirements to distribution facilities and testing and resort research laboratories because the odor associated with these uses is minimal. The CCLUO lumps these types of facilities in with processing and commercial nurseries, which have a much larger odor footprint. We believe the uh enhanced setback requirements aren't needed for these distribution and testing and research laboratories. Uh we've got a supplemental for this item, supplemental number one. Uh it includes some language responding to the first three amendments. Uh it shows a proposed tinkering of the language of section three one four dash fifty-five point three point four point one, which is suggested by county council for internal uh consistency of the RRRR amendments. Uh supplemental one also proposes to delete the propagation areas from the uh low, from the proposed outdoor low watt lighting allowance. And this is important because propagation areas normally use higher wattage light and lights, and so we're, we don't want them to be limited to just this low wattage lighting. Uh also, county council advised us that the proposed changes to the definition of outdoor cultivation in the zoning ordinance need to be reconciled with the same definition that's used in the tax code. And uh we don't need your commission to be involved in tax code amendments. And so we're recommending that you just add to your um resolution of approval a suggestion that the Board of Supervisors consider amendments to the tax code to achieve consistency with these zoning ordinance amendments. And then also, just before the meeting tonight, uh county councils sent an email to me noting that the applicable applicable date of the resolution should be updated to read uh July fifteenth rather than July one. And so those are all covered in supplemental one. Also, in supplemental one or public comments, we received uh comments from the Ag Commissioner Jeff Dolph, providing context for what his inspection team sees in the field. We've also got comments from Allison Ree- Reeves, uh Roby Tenario, Robert Renfro, and Marissa St. John. And I'm happy to go into any of the comments and respond to them if you like. That's the uh end of the, of my prepared presentation remarks. I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Michael while we have him? Okay, get open, make sure that I'm not missing something then. All right, no questions. I'll ask you to shrink your screen or give us back the screen, Michael, then, so I can go to public comment. You never shared a screen?
Good question.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry, um I was reading through some of the stuff and um I I'd like, Michael, if you could um address the, some of the comments about the um OSHA requirements and then outside versus mixed light that is coming up about things.
Yeah, the uh Ag Commissioners's comments are on point on that. Um some of the uh, some of the comments that we've heard or the Ag Commissioners heard from applicants is that OSHA requires a certain amount of lighting in areas that are um where their employees are working. And and so they propose to uh the state that um that they be allowed in their outdoor operations uh to use this low watt lightage or low wattage lighting for uh employee safety as required by OSHA. And so far, the state has not bought off on that argument. And so the state considers any use of uh supplemental lighting in an uh otherwise outdoor setting to um, that that kicks them into a mixed light category for permitting at the state level.
So you're saying um Cal cannabis is not on board with using any light um at all with outdoor grows? Is that what you're saying?
That's right.
All right, thank you.
Uh Director, go ahead.
It it is worth pointing out, though, that the state has two definitions of mixed light. One definition is for the this type of low wattage mixed light, and the other is is for mixed light, which uses the lights to actually grow with. So we're not completely following what the state does because of the tax implications of Measure S. At some point, we do need to realign all of our cat, our definitions of cultivation and Measure S, but we're not proposing to transfer low wattage lighting used to stall flowering as mixed light at this time.
Thank you, Director. Noah, you had your hand up first.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um uh thanks, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Richardson, for that uh presentation. Um the thing that I wanted to ask that I'm not sure I'm following is the twenty-five percent propagation provision. Is that, does that mean, I mean, I I understood in the past that that there was a sort of ten percent of the permitted cultivation area, an extra ten percent that would be for propagation or for uh, you know, immature plants. But does that mean that going forward, it would be that an extra twenty-five percent beyond the permitted cultivation area could be allotted for uh propagation for nursery?
Yeah, the the best way to look at this is right now, the limit is ten percent, and we're proposing to increase that to allow up to twenty-five percent of the cultivation area to be used for propagation. And that, this would be in addition to the allowed cultivation area.
Right. I mean, to be clear, it's not, it's not saying you can use twenty-five percent of your permitted area for the nursery. We're saying no, that we're we're permitting the area, the cultivation area of X square foot, and then that twenty-five percent of that will now be permitted automatically as a nursery.
Well, it's not an automatic uh allowance. They would have to propose it in their application, and that would be considered uh along with all of the other um parts of the project that, before your commission.
Okay, I shouldn't say automatically. It just, that would be the, okay, raise the limit up to twenty-five percent. Thank you for answering that question.
Uh Melanie, you're next.
Oh, my, my question was unanswered. Thank you.
Okay, Thomas, you're next. You unmuted and then you re-muted.
Uh it, I'm on my phone and it actually unmuted. I unmuted and it made me mute back up. Um I just wanted to add some perspective as far as the state. The state technically defines mixed light, uh mixed light category one. If you use only sunlight and pull a tart to light deprecate with zero worker safety lighting or vegetative state lighting, just, that's the way the state defines it, and that's their argument. And uh the second part is a question for staff. If uh this increase, potential increase in immature plant area was approved, would previously approved projects need to file for a modification? Because that's a question I've been asked by a lot of people.
Yeah, the answer is yes.
Okay, that's it. Uh Brian, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um just going back to Mr. Richardson's comments, it makes sense to me to allow the OSHA, you know, required lighting, but it seems like the proposal goes further to allow additional lighting for essentially using lights but calling it outdoor. Can you help explain why, why we'd be interested in diverging from the definition of the state and allowing this under outdoor?
Yeah, I I guess your commission could uh follow very precisely the state allowance and develop a a two-tier um mixed light option rather than going this route. Um the what what we're, the reason why we're going this route is because that's, that's what the industry seems to be um most comfortable with, with outdoor cultivation, and we're uh, we're just uncomfortable with the thought that low wattage lighting, string lights in your greenhouse, the presence of string lights in your greenhouse that are turned on for a small part of the year uh for a very specific purpose, which is to keep your plants from flowering, that's just a different thing than the mixed light uh operations that we've seen. And so we're, we're trying to keep uh a distance between the outdoor and the mixed light. That's, that's as close as I can get to explaining the rationale there.
All right. Any other questions from the, oh, go ahead, Melanie?
Yeah, I was just wondering how many projects approximately are we talking about, given that the uh the window closed for these triple Rs?
Well, the, I'm, yeah, I'm not sure how many triple R projects are still waiting to be approved. Maybe uh Cliff or Director Floyd could respond to that.
Thank you.
I'll take a shot. The, the, the number of triple Rs that are so-called being stacked is fairly small. It's maybe five to seven that would be affected with this.
Thank you. That's important for context.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff before we open this up for public?
Hopefully, my dogs won't start barking, but was there some sort of public hearing to determine what items were important? Are there other items that the industry would have liked us to consider? Or is this just what staff is recommending? I I'm just curious how we came up with these issues as opposed to other issues.
Yeah, that's a great question. Um really, what's driving this package of amendments is the board's direction on the RRRR program. They want, they wanted that revised right away. And from staff's perspective, we had a couple of other changes, uh somewhat immaterial changes that we also wanted to to see um to, to better administer the um, the, the program. And so we threw those in, and and really, it was those uh, the, the population of amendments that we had uh seen a need for, combined with this directive from the board that caused the, the package that you're seeing in front of you.
Thank you. Uh Mike, go ahead.
One other question regarding the lighting and stuff. For existing um permits that have outside um approval, um if this was approved with the lighting inside, does that mean that some of the outdoor grows, are they, some of them having hoop houses and stuff and near residential areas that would be affected with light?
Yeah, that's an important question. In the way that we're trying to control it, well, first of all, the low watt lighting that we're talking about is only used for a very specific purpose for a very short time of the year, a couple of weeks in the beginning of the growing season. And we have uh in the ordinance embedded the requirement that that lighting shall that that lighting shall be directed, uh, and shielded to only illuminate the cultivation area. And so we're hoping that, that those two in combination, working in combination together are going to eliminate any potential for outdoor, uh, impacts, lighting impacts.
So when you say towards the cultivation area, I thought this was for OSHA, um, standards, you know, for, um, employee safety. Um, how does that work then?
Well, typically the, uh, employees are only, uh, doing their work in areas that where the plants are grown. That's the rationale.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking of some areas, um, in the county near residential areas I think are not mixed light but are outdoor, but still would be affected. Um, do we have any idea of where those would be or what would be affected?
Yeah, I see Director Ford turning his mic on.
Do you want to speak, Director? Sure. So there, there are many, many hoop houses around that technically are outdoor. Many of those may be close to residential. Under this scenario, I think what Ms. Richardson was saying is entirely correct, is that they're required to shield the lighting, which may mean pulling tarps. Many of the people who do this also do light depth. So when these lights are on, they'd be required to put the tarps up. They can't illuminate the site, even though this is low wattage light, they need to cover it, need to comply with dark sky standards. That's the requirement of both 1.0 and 2.0.
So in other words, the public would not be seeing this lighting outside of the hoop houses, um, still?
Yes, that is correct. But the public is seeing this lighting outside the hoop houses. It is a violation of the ordinance and we would treat it as such.
Good. I, that's what I wanted to make sure that was available and out there and understood by the general public. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Uh, Thomas Mulder, go ahead.
So the director kind of covered what I was, uh, curious about the dark sky rules because I have seen not, a lot of people are really, really good at this, but if it's in the vegetative state, some people may want to not spend the labor cost of pulling that tarp at 30 minutes before sunset. So, or even if you're working late, say, right now, you know, that you gotta be pulling those tarps. If you're working late, you still need to follow those dark sky lights, even if you are working at night or dark sky rules, even if you're working, you know, past dark. So that, that would be my concern about that because I would, it would be really unfortunate to pass this and then basically go back to the sky being lit up even more.
All right. Any other questions from, for staff from the commission? Seeing no more hands up, I am now going to open the public comment. And the first caller will be, uh, 9831. Go ahead, 9831. Star six to unmute.
Okay, thank you. I forgot about the star six. This is Holly Carter. Thank you for taking public comments. And I really want to thank staff and the commission, um, for hearing these adjustments and for taking them, um, taking the time to listen to the needs of the industry. First of all, I want to say that the two pieces, um, especially the lighting addition actually will increase cohesion with, um, the state regulations in many different ways, which I believe will increase the, um, compliance overall. And so as was spoken to the, at the state level, currently the mixed light definition goes from zero to six watts per square foot, which is what we're looking at here as well. Most people that I work with are under about one watt per square foot. We're talking about those string lights and everybody was right on point with saying that it's used for a short term in the year. Sometimes they're removed right away, sometimes locked up for being able to work later on in the year. Um, and not only does the permit 1.0 and 2.0 have dark sky conditions, but so do state regulations, just to put everyone's mind at ease there. So there are a lot of, um, oversight considerations there and everybody knows that they need to keep that shielded and contained. Um, what I believe it does is also does some environmental, um, impact in terms of if you're allowed within a license type zero to six watts per square foot, there's been, um, some people have wanted to lean more towards the six, which maybe has asked them, you know, if they're going to be using lights anyway or going to have to be paying the additional licensee. Some people have been wanting to use more and more lighting and I think that this will support our community in keeping the power usage low because it is really just all that's needed for that short time. And the other thing is with the 25% adjustment, um, if the 10% was a loose, not a requirement that has been written anywhere. So not only does it memorialize it, which helps people plan and remain in compliance and, and, um, you know, adjust their operations. But the other thing that I've, uh, to kind of answer Thomas's question, my understanding is that someone could ask for a standard deviation or a modification to increase their overall square footage, or if they're in an impacted watershed or cannot do that for other reasons, could adjust their canopy, um, you know, some of the square footage.
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
To support their propagation operations. Um, and some of those things are actually just temporary, you know, the plants get bigger where you need to receive plants from nursery, um, to be able to put in a second or third, usually second, um, run of plants and they just kind of pop out of, well, holding space. So this is a very supportive amendment as well and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And caller, Stephen Lou. Stephen?
Hi, I'm just, uh, representing a client that, uh, went to decision earlier this morning at the zoning administrator hearing and, um, the nursery issue materially impacts their, their operations. Um, they, they were conditioned basically on outcome of tonight's meeting, uh, for their request for approximately 20% nursery versus the 10% that, um, is the current operated, upper, you know, operating procedures, uh, for the county approvals. The nursery components is vital to the operations of, of the farms. Right now, you know, that if they do not have the, uh, a nursery that works very closely with them, they're sort of beholden to, um, another businesses, but, um, operations if they, if the nursery has a insect or a pest infestation or an outbreak of certain, uh, plant disease, um, or potentially they, you know, got a higher bid on some plants, then they could lose, um, their, their, their order or their place, um, or they might get the plants that are smaller than they need and they may lose a harvest uh, for one greenhouse or maybe their entire farm, depending on how much that, uh, impacts their operations. So the, um, the larger nursery component is, is vital, uh, to most farms' operations. If you actually, uh, I, I believe the planning department was offered the opportunity to tour a facility, um, in Rio del, and it was an indoor operation where, uh, the nursery component is actually 50% of the size of the, the indoor grow. So to, to properly supply a operating farm, um, you know, the, the extra nursery space is, is absolutely critical. My feedback on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, 7454.
Thank you for my opportunity to speak. I wish to read from Jeff Dolph's letter so the public has, uh, has knowledge of what that is. Of course, planning is aware that Cal cannabis considered any supplementing lighting to be inconsistent with an outdoor license, even when the license asserts the lights are in place for safety of employees. Staff has asked Cal cannabis for an interpretation, was told they are reviewing the Cal OSHA requirement, but seem skeptical of the claim the supplemental lights are in place to comply with OSHA requirements. Uh, I don't know if any of you have ever worked in construction, uh, I, I, I think Alan probably has. We throw on the 500 watt lights or if we need lighting, we don't usually string out small lights. You put this little thing on your head and it's got a high, nice light. Uh, I can't remember the exact name. You get them at Harbor Freight for next month and that's how you do this. So that's how anybody working on any kind of job who needs good lighting, uh, safe lighting, which is in compliance with Cal OSHA would do it. So before you move anything forward with this, you should get a determination Cal OSHA on this. Highly recommend you do. Um, I, I really have a problem with this 25%. Last speaker just said for an indoor grow. Now, we're not talking indoor grows here, are we? So, so let's say you have one of these, a, a large grow, four acres, you have one of those mega puppies. So you're allowed to have one full acre of nursery. And, and that does not make any sense at all to me. Uh, this, this is untaxed. Uh, in reality, those of us who understand the business understand that a lot of that product could actually go into other forms of oil or things of that nature. Some people take their mother plants and they actually let them go to flower during the last process. This should be part of the cannabis project. It should be taxed. And especially, I, I, at this last, uh, meeting, there was 18% of this where it was being proposed. It wasn't kept at 10%. There were a bunch of them where we're exceeding the 10%. Even the thing that was passed by the supervisors here down at the Bald Farm exceeded that 10%. So that hasn't been adhered to. I have no faith in staff going ahead and monitoring that and keeping anything other than everybody getting 25% in a zoning administrator hearing. Um, I've been advised by, um, HUMAP that there, if should you move forward with this kind of a gigantic expansion of the footprint of cannabis in Humboldt County, they will have their legal staff, uh, look at this and, and see whether, uh, you're in compliance. If you're going to make such a gigantic change, it's about 25% more than actually was in your EIR, that should be in a separate EIR and I'm formally requesting that that kind of change be done in EIR. Thank you for letting me have my 30 seconds. And so, so that's my main request. This, this kind of a magnitude of increasing the potential footprint by 25% should be in an EIR. And, uh, that's, uh, something that I think you're going to find in your best interest to do if you try and move forward with this. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next speaker is 7429. Go ahead.
Hi, uh, good evening. My name's Robi Tenorio and I'm commenting on, let me, I'm sorry, I'm having that. I'm commenting on behalf of Citizens for Sustainable Humboldt. We've already submitted written comments and I, I hope you've all had a chance to read them, but I, I wanted to expand a little bit. We do appreciate the work that the county staff and decision makers, um, in trying to remedy some of the problems the RRR program has created. I realize the program was planned to prevent further environmental destruction and, um, possibly mitigate some of that damage. So hopefully this, this proposed change will help with that. And, um, the change seems very good. Unfortunately, the other proposals that are embedded halfway through this item, both the enlargement of the propagation area from 10% to 25% and the, uh, modifying or updating the definition of outdoor to allow artificial lighting is, is very, um, troubling. It's a, um, an expansion of cultivation that could cause significant environmental impacts that have not been analyzed, um, pursuant to SEQA. So you have caps, um, on the square footage that this county set. And by not including the propagation area in the calculation of square footage, you're, you're not able to adequately analyze that, the, um, the environmental impacts. So now you're taking that uncounted 10% and increasing it to 25%. So if folks, you know, applicants need the extra space, that's fine, but it needs to be counted and analyzed as that. It can't just be a separate, a separate item. And, um, the, um, increasing energy use with, uh, going from outdoor with no, which is no artificial, um, light, increasing that energy use leads us to more use of generators for cannabis and that would greatly increase our fire danger, our noise pollution and the, uh, ever enlarging carbon footprint of the cannabis industry. So, um, this was absolutely not considered in the EIR for the CCLUO and the county would be.
Thirty seconds.
SEQA, okay. So I, um, I urge you to not approve this agenda item as it is because it, uh, has the potential to greatly expand outdoor cultivation and that has not been, um, analyzed and it would require supplemental environmental review under SEQA before it may be considered for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next caller, 7108. Star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Bonnie Blackberry. I sent in comments on, for the July 1st and I sent in some more for today. And, uh, during that time, I found the resolution by the Board of Supervisors back on May 8th, 2018, which I did send. Hopefully you all got it. Uh, where there, um, the resolution established a limit, caps on the number of permits and acres which may be approved for commercial cannabis cultivation. And, um, it talks about, um, including outdoor mixed light and nurseries. So the county sets these caps that are supposed to be protecting the environment, environmental impacts. And then you're allowing cultivation, because that's what propagation is, part of cultivation, to happen and kind of, I don't know how it cannot be included in the square footage. If you need it for nurseries or whatever, fine, but included in the square footage because it is part of the cultivation area. And this, um, yeah, so to me, that's, I just don't understand. And if you've been doing it for 10%, now you want to do it for 25%. Then there's this thing with the lights, with the many things, oh, they're only going to be a couple of weeks. But because of people doing multiple crops, that couple of weeks could turn into a couple of months. And whom enters those lights? Who's the ones that sees them? It's the neighbors. Uh, so that becomes a problem for the neighbors that they get burdened with doing with that. Uh, changing the definition, I mean, it's like, let's make the definition the opposite of what it is. We're going to call outside.
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
Establish definition, which means no artificial light. Then we're going to say, yeah, we're going to have it, but we're not calling it mixed light. I think Humboldt should get the two categories of mixed light and call it what it is. And if you're using the area for cannabis cultivation, it absolutely should be included in the square footage assessment. Thanks.
Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you. Uh, public, 4972.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to discuss these matters tonight. My name is James Anderson. I'm a environmental land use and natural resource attorney from Harrison, Temidore, Hungerford and Johnson Sacramento. And we represent a number of permitted cultivators in the county who asked us to reach out and comment on these, uh, these proposed amendments. So tonight I'd like to discuss generally just two of the proposed amendments. The, uh, allowable lights over the outdoor cultivation area and the limitation on the propagation area. But before I even make those comments, I'd like just to say that the fact that the planning department is considering to allow lighting over outdoor cultivation areas is a step in the right direction. This really does line up with industry practice and it helps cultivators comply with workplace safety laws. I think in the long run, this amendment would be very helpful. So with that in mind, just a few comments on the outdoor lighting. Um, first of all, it's, as it's written right now, it only allows 60 watts per 100 square feet, which is a confusing metric. I think. I think to be consistent with state regulations, the, uh, planning department should propose and adopt an outdoor cultivation supplemental lighting that's measured on a watt per square foot basis. That's how the state licensing system works. And you could accomplish the same goals, which is to maintain plants in a vegetative state and workplace safety, and also just have it on a watt per square foot basis. That way you allow the cultivators to use the lights in the way that fits their operations best. Secondly, uh, Mr. Richardson commented on this and it was in the supplemental staff report. Uh, the supplemental staff report proposed removing, uh, the limitation on the lighting for the propagation area. And I fully support that change. Uh, you know, limiting the light above the propagation area would severely hinder cultivation activities, especially for nurseries. So that, those are my comments on the lighting. I want to turn to the propagation area, which is probably the more important of the two comments. So currently in the CCLUO has no limitation on the size of propagation area. The 10% propagation area, uh, uh, my understanding is that it's a determination made by the planning department, you know, upon approval. And there's no reason to put a cap of 25% on the propagation area. The staff report says that this is an industry practice and it simply is not. You know, in my opinion, to be consistent with state regulations, the county should not be limiting propagation areas. You know, the state regulations, if you want to have 10,000 square, 10,000 square feet of immature plant area, you should be allowed to have that as well at the county. Um, so in closing, you know, I think the, in order to keep Humboldt County competitive in the commercial cannabis market across the state, uh, allowing cultivators to have unlimited propagation area and these lights above outdoor cultivation areas would be incredibly beneficial. And, uh, in closing, I'd say I'm available for questions if anyone has questions about state regulations or, uh, Cal OSHA or my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Mike G.
Uh, hello everyone, are you there?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Mike Gordon from Fibonacci Management. I'm a regulatory compliance consultant for many farms in Humboldt County. I first want to thank the planning department for listening to our cultivators and attempting to align county code with cultivation practices as they pertain to the use of minimal amounts of light in outdoor canopy areas to maintain plants in a vegetative state and for required Cal OSHA employee safety lighting. Uh, lighting for propagation, on the other hand, within immature plant areas that are not a part of the permitted flowering canopy areas should not be arbitrarily limited since the state does not currently place a limit on lights in immature plant areas for outdoor license types. The proposed allowance, limiting wattage to 60 watts per 100 square foot to maintain mother plants and propagate clones would be not adequate. Mother plants need higher intensity light to stimulate robust vegetative growth in which to take clones off of. And typical clone setups, even with the most efficient LED lights would not, um, would exceed, would far exceed this limit. From what I understand, the Board of Supervisors has received an outpouring of concerns over the planning department and commission's limitation of cultivators to 10% for propagation areas over the last few years, which is grossly undersized to achieve operational efficiencies. Current county and state regulations do not impose a codified limit, which currently is not, um, restricted through county, you know, regulations as well for immature and propagation areas. So what purpose does it serve to codify a restrictive limit since our cultivators are already being subjected to limits through their COAs, especially given the extreme market forces at play, which threaten to extinguish a good portion of our licensed cultivators prior to year's end? Um, many cultivators are also under the impression that by changing the verbiage of propagation to allow 25%, which is desperately needed and is more closely in line with industry practices, that this will entitle cultivators to obtain this limit with minimal additional permitting requirements. Um, I have a couple of questions for John Ford. Would this change entitle zoning clearance, special permits and conditional you, you conditional, uh, uh, cultivators to apply, um, for this increase in limit? What would this process look like and what additional studies or costs do you foresee to occur? And, um, essentially how many cultivators, existing cultivators do you estimate may qualify for an increase in propagation area? I, I heard in the introduction that this.
30 seconds.
It only applies to zoning clearance certificates? Does it apply also to special permits and conditional use permits? I also just suggest that the county set up an email list for interested licensees and applicants to stay abreast to propose regulatory changes and county information, as I feel that there was not nearly enough outreach or notice given to vested parties prior to tonight's meeting, considering the outcome of these seemingly minor definition changes could have major ramifications to licensed cultivators. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next caller, James Greenfield. Star six to unmute. Are you there, James?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
I just had one question, well, a few questions, one for you, you guys. What's the basis in docu, in documentation the county has to support your ancillary 10% nursery for multiple harvest cannabis production? Like where did you get this 10% from?
Okay. And your second question?
Well, I, I wouldn't get an answer on that.
The director or staff will come back at the end after all and address them. We don't do it on back and forth on each individual person.
Just to let you know, between mothering and creating clones to be able to independently support your own farm, 10% is absolutely not enough of a percentage to be able to handle a multiple harvest farm. And I don't know why that you're trying to hamstring an industry that's really going to start to support Humboldt County and all of its services, fire department, police, schooling, government and, and sanitation and everything else. I mean, if you guys have a number that actually supports that 10%, it would be great to hear. But in reality, that number absolutely does not support being able to run an independent farm productive and competitively. This is a business, it's an agricultural business. It's not 1980s marijuana against the law.
Are you finished?
Uh, the only other analogy I would have is, you know, they talk about cheating and that we should not get more than a certain percent because people are going to be using that space for cheating or gaming the system. I mean, you really can't set policy on people cheating and gaming a system. If that was to happen, you should only produce cars that do 65 miles an hour, but that.
30 seconds.
Well, that's about all I have.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next caller is 5069.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Ross Gordon on behalf of Humboldt County Growers Alliance. Want to thank staff, um, for, uh, working on this ordinance. Um, and also want to thank staff for, um, the supplemental which removes the restriction on propagation, um, which I think has been mentioned is, is really out of line, um, with normal cultivation practice. And, and so really appreciate that, um, that addition and amendment. Um, want to comment on just a few of the things which were discussed previously. Um, as far as task lighting in the canopy area goes, um, we, you know, do support that in order to be consistent with OSHA requirements. And just want to point out, and I think Commissioner Mulder mentioned this, that although that's not, uh, the way that the state defines outdoor cultivation, there are already several respects in which Humboldt Cannabis Ordinance, the definition of outdoor and mixed light cultivation is already not consistent with, uh, state definitions of outdoor and mixed light cultivation. So, um, I think there's a discussion about aligning those, those definitions over the longer term. Um, but I, I don't, we don't see it as a particularly a problem if those, um, those definitions are different. Um, and it really just means that, you know, someone who has an outdoor license under the county, um, is authorized to, to perform those practices. Um, also, um, on the, the question of immature plant space, really wanted to thank, um, staff for, for putting this forward. Um, as has been mentioned, it's really, you know, normal cultivation practice to be using significantly more than the 10% that's currently allowed. Um, I did want to echo, um, those questions which were asked previously about who, uh, can qualify for those amendments to the amount of immature plant area. And also wanted to, um, ask if there's any distinction with respect to, um, farmers under ordinance 1.0 versus ordinance 2.0. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, uh, there anybody else in the public that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public comment. And Director, would you like to answer any of those questions or would staff like to answer any of those questions that were brought up? I've, I've closed publicly, so.
Sure, go ahead and answer some of the questions.
Yes.
You're, you're muted, John.
Thanks, Michael. So one of the things I, where I want to start was that in 1.0, there is a kind of a reference to propagation area, which kind of refers to clone rooms, which is a very small area. And so that 10% came about as a evolutionary understanding that more than just a small little room was necessary. And as the industry has continued to grow and evolve, it's become clear that 10% wasn't adequate in all circumstances, particularly where as Mr. Greenfield mentioned, there are multiple harvests going on per year. And, and so we've heard that over and over again. And, and that is why we're bringing this back. And we tried to find a number, 25% may be arbitrary, but trying to find a number that's much larger than the 10%, but still provides a regulatory benchmark that can be monitored and maintained. Um, as you see in the hearing tonight, the public testimony, there is concern from the public, uh, about and concern from environmental interests about not regulating the size of cultivation areas and not regulating things. So that's why we're, we're trying to create a balance between allowing cultivators the ability to, uh, have sufficient area for propagation space to control their, their nursery stock and, and also providing a regulatory benchmark. I, I think that, um, in terms of modifying permits, this would apply to 1.0, uh, in terms of people's ability to modify their permit and 2.0, uh, the way we'll, we're going to try to make this as painless as possible, if it's something that can easily be approved. Um, it may be just a, a minor note, like, uh, if, if it's a zoning clearance certificate and there are no environmental factors that, uh, would come into play that haven't been previously evaluated, then, then it would be pretty simple. If there are environmental factors or if there are situations associated with the, uh, nature of the expansion, then we may need to look at some things. I wish I could give a one size fits all, but unfortunately our cultivation locations don't have a one size fit all kind of circumstance. I, I think it is important to point out that we are attempting to modify our existing framework relative to outdoor because of the tax implications. Uh, we do recognize that as we go forward, we're going to have to reconcile the CCLUO, um, and whatever form of the cannabis land use ordinance is in effect at the time and the major S and perhaps even the state. Uh, but in order to accomplish this in an expedient way until we know what's going on with major S, it was really difficult to do that kind of a comprehensive modification to the cultivation type. Michael, is there anything that I'm missing in terms of responding to comments and questions?
Yeah, the only other thing I would mention is that some of the commenters were challenging the decision to allow, uh, this additional propagation area, saying that, uh, no environmental review has been done. In fact, the staff report includes an analysis of the impacts associated with these, uh, new amendments. Uh, it's in the form of an addendum to the environmental impact report that was certified by the board, uh, upon adoption of the CCLUO. So I just wanted to point your commission to, uh, that analysis. That's all I have.
Sorry about that. I had myself muted trying to keep down that back feed. Uh, thank you, Director and Mr. Richardson. Um, I see, uh, Mike Newman has his hand up, so I'll bring this back to the commission. Mike, you're first up.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Couple of questions. Um, one of them that I had heard on some of the public comment was, um, what will be the outreach to existing permitees about any of these changes on, uh, the CCLU? That was, um, number one. Number two, and I think it's important to reach out to existing permitees, um, about any changes that are done, um, we need to have that open communication so that if things are relaxed, um, they should know about it. They're restrictive, of course, they, they're already permitted, so it won't make any difference there. So number two question that I've got is, um, I've seen some concerns about the, um, areas of propagation being opened up from the 10% that we've been allowing to more than, up to 25% and not being, um, um, calculated in, uh, water usage and, and all the other cultivation reasons, uh, for allowing a permit. Um, I'd like to know a little bit more about that as to how that would affect, um, especially the use of, um, water in our region there.
You want to?
Sure. Um, first of all, yes, we will, um, make sure that we, once this is adopted, assuming it gets adopted, if it gets adopted, we will notify, uh, the cultivation community of, of the change in the process involved to modify, uh, permits. Uh, secondly, relative to the concerns about the propagation area not being calculated in the water usage, in each of the, um, applications that are brought forward for approval, whether it be a zoning clearance certificate, a special permit or a conditional use permit, the total water usage is addressed. And so if this change were to result in the need for additional water, that is something that would need to be evaluated.
So that would be part of the, um, um, information brought forward? Uh, because right now I don't believe we've been looking at that 10% in propagation, uh, for water usage, is that correct?
I, I would say that's not true. I would say that under the 10%, that is part of the water usage. We, we look at the total water usage for the entire cultivation site and, and the propagation area and the, any other cannabis related activities that consumes water. And then what we do is monitor for cumulative water use.
Good, well, um, as, as I've said, that was part of the, um, comments brought in by the public. They were under the impression, um, that it was not calculated in on water usage. So, thank you. You're muted, Alan.
I think I heard, uh, Alan call my name.
Go ahead, play it, Thomas.
Okay. So I would say it's very crucial for Humboldt County cultivators to allow this additional, uh, immature plant space. It's very, I don't even know how to say it in, in so many words and I'm not trying to blast any nurseries or anything like that, but I know multiple cultivators that have had problems with nurseries fulfilling orders in time. which ruin, can ruin your whole season. Being as the market is very, very challenging. I know personally, I propagate 20% more plants than I need and kill them off. Just because you have to have the best available plants to produce the best available product. And allowing yourself to have your own nursery stock, it avoids the problem of bringing in phasarium, hemp-laden viroids, tomato ring spot, rusted mites, all the other lovely things that you, you can get. Nothing against any nursery at all, but those are things, if you don't, as a cultivator, don't have control of that, those are things that can be brought in. I think it's very, very important to be able to, if for sustainability is the goal in Humboldt County, this is something we need to consider. Something I, that's ringing in the back of my mind though, under state law, nursery space, you can R and D, which means flower, in, under state law. So I would like some clarification. If, if this was approved, if there was a rule, you know, whatever state definition is, half, half inch of pistols or something like that, I would just like some clarification. Because if you say nursery space, this is where state and county definitions need to probably not align. Otherwise, I, I would believe you would be allowing more cultivation if you allowed R and D in that nursery space. So I, I don't know, just some thoughts there. There's a couple of other comments, but honestly, I'm putting together plumbing parts right now and I don't have a pen to take notes for public comments. So that's it for now.
Okay, thank you, Thomas. No, you've been waiting patiently. Go ahead.
Oh, well, thank you. I wanted to chime up, I, I wanted to chime in on behalf of what Bonnie Blackberry said, actually. I thought she called attention with her letter and with her spoken remarks tonight to an interesting point, which is that, okay, I mean, leaving aside, or not leaving aside, but you know, setting to one, setting to the side for a moment, the, the question of whether our overall environmental documentation, you know, supports this expansion or, or this, this expansion up to 25% of, of nursery, of propagation space. Setting that aside, we do have our own policy in place about the caps per watershed or per region. And the, the wording of the, the, the policy about that from 2018, she seemed to quote, that did point specifically to counting nursery space as well as cultivated area towards those caps. So I, I hope, I just wanted to sort of put it out there that, that her comment made sense to me. And I wanted to get an answer from staff as to whether that would in fact be the way we would calculate towards those sub watershed caps. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to take that, Director?
Yeah, I think that's something we need to look at more closely. Because traditionally, we are not including the nursery space within the approvals. And so it may be something that we have to go back and recalculate all of the approvals and all the watersheds.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, yeah.
I'm going to follow up on that one. I, I guess I've listened to all the different talk on this all night and it just seems to me, what does it matter how much they want to use for nursery space versus if they want to do 50% of their, their space for nursery and 50% of, of whatever their approved square footage of coverage is? What do we care what they're doing in that space? As long as they're not exceeding that space? And I don't understand how we can be approving 25, giving them 25% more space on top of what we approve. That just doesn't make any sense to me. So I think that we should, whatever the approved amount of square footage is should be what the project is. And what they do within that space is their business. If they want to do more, you know, way, way more nursery than most places do, let them do more nursery. But don't give them an extra 25% because everything is based on what the square footage of coverage is. So I just, I can't understand that. Maybe you can explain it to me.
I mean, that, that is one way of approaching it is to set, define a cultivation area and propagation cultivation. Everything needs to fit within that area. I think one of the things that probably should be considered is that that also has tax implications. And that propagation typically doesn't produce flowering products, which is the area that really is devoted to taxation. And so one of the things we've attempted to do is align cultivation area within our permits with cultivation area from a tax perspective. That's probably the best answer I can give.
So basically, what it all comes down to is money. I, I get it. All right. Thomas, you have your hand back up and then Mike. I saw you there, Mike.
So the other thing, just listening to this, and I don't know, factoring in that it would be all cultivators, but under CEQA pre-existing, I know a lot of farms that did both indoor and outdoor and mixed light all in the same partial. And through licensing, those indoors are no longer operational or existing. So that, that is something I've seen, you know, usually 10% of what an outdoor project was, they had 10% of that cultivation also running indoor during the winter months. So that's just, just food for thought out there. I, I understand the concerns and maybe, I don't know, maybe, maybe there would be a middle ground as far as what nursery space could be allowed for non-vegetative, like watts per square foot, if that would maybe mean a middle ground for you? Because honestly, you can throw starts out in June in a hoop house that you're going to use for nursery stock and run them till August, and they'll grow. They won't start flowering and you don't really need any power. You can throw solar pans in there and put a shade cloth on to cool it down. So just, I hear your concerns, Alan. So I'm trying to just throw out a possible middle ground idea. And maybe it's a temporary hoop structure that goes up in the, at a certain point in time and comes down. I, I know many cultivators that would be really happy with another 10% of square feet or 10% because sometimes you're, you run a new strain and it doesn't finish quick enough. And then you, you're cutting clones and then you run out of space and it, it just leads to a nightmare. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Thomas. Mike, you're next, then Melanie.
So part of my question before about the propagation and permitting and watershed kind of got convoluted with what I've heard then afterwards. So I'm looking at that 2018 resolution by the supervisors. And point number two says it is appropriate to limit the total number of open air cultivation, parentheses, including outdoor and mixed light cultivation and nurseries, end parentheses, and indoor cultivation permits granted as well as the total permitted acreage of cultivation on the following table. So I asked about water usage. What about the cap distribution on this, Director? Are we looking then at then nurseries, which is propagation, as well as the mixed light and outdoor and indoor as a total permits and acres allowed in these watersheds?
I think one of the things, in all honesty, we need to go back and rethink is where are we trying to talk about propagation areas? Or were we talking about permits being issued for nurseries? And that's kind of my recollection, but without having gone back and going back and thinking about that a little bit, I'm a little hesitant to give you a definitive answer right now. Because I, I, let me.
Nurseries would be the propagation, you know, the startups.
Well, but we, we didn't define propagation space in the CCLUO.
Yeah.
So why would we call it out in the resolution as something that we're counting in the cap when we weren't counting that as something that was being permitted? The thing that we were permitting in the CCLU was nurseries for commercial purposes. We were permitting commercial nurseries.
And, and that's what I would like to see a little bit more information about then. Because this expansion of nurseries or nursery space, propagation is kind of along the same lines. It's just, it's the individual grower propagation versus a third-party nursery. In my mind and the public, I believe it's the same thing. It's, it's being grown. It's using water. It's doing all those, the same things there. So that's what I'm bringing up.
Well, that's a completely fair point. And we have heard from the public tonight and we've heard from at least now two planning commissioners that thought that the cultivation area should just be the cultivation area. And if that's the approach to be taken, we could certainly take that forward to the board.
Melanie, you waiting? You're muted.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, so I'd just like a little bit of clarification in terms of some of the, the definitions. Because, you know, to, to root the, the plants, it's, you know, just a matter of a week or something, you know, during which you need almost no light. But then after that, you typically would use the 18 hours of light again. So I, I'd like to know what the regulations, the stipulations would be in terms of what are we calling a propagated clone? What are we calling something that's now a growing plant? Because otherwise, it's, it's difficult to come up with a policy.
We do not have a, a specific definition for when the plant becomes cultivation, if you will. That is one of the things that we have struggled with. That's part of the rationale for imposing a limit on the percentage of the propagation areas. There are some cultivators who really like to have very immature plant cultivation and then have an area where they move plants to and let them grow and harden for a while and, and basically grow. Can you mute your mic?
Set.
Wyatt Stewart?
And, and continue to grow and, until they move it into the cultivation area. So there'd almost be three cultivation areas. And that's why some people would argue that there should be no limit on what is propagation area. Because then the, the actual cultivation area is only the flowering area where the plant is moved when it's just ready to go into flower. Everything before that is vegetative growth. And we have taken the position that that's not consistent with the ordinance, that what the ordinance allows is a small amount of propagation. And unfortunately, Commissioner McCall, that's not well-defined. And I mean, if, one of the things we could look at is defining what a plant in a propagated space is. You know, how big before it's moved into the cultivation area? And then once it reaches that size, is considered cultivation?
Yeah, I, I, I would, I definitely feel like we need to do something like that. Because otherwise, we're really talking about for a week, you know, these farmers will have some of their plants at very low light and, and rooting. And then after that, we're basically talking about, you know, regular growth. And so unless we try to define some of that, I don't see how we can adequately address this policy change.
Okay, yeah, no, we can, we can bring some information back to your consideration on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commission? Thomas, go ahead.
So I, I really respect Mrs. McCaver's idea on rooting clones. But in all reality, we have, my, my propagation team has trialed and aired every last possible scenario. And honestly, you have, you can't run the LEDs. They don't clone right. And if you don't have, what is it? You need 104 watts over a four by one or four by two, so an eight square foot clone rack to actually root your clones in a timely manner. It takes anywhere from 10 to 21 days. And then from there, everyone does it differently. But it just, it does take some wattage. And I don't know, I mean, do we, do we allow the 25% and say, hey, that, that includes your clone room, your, your pot up room, your greenhouse outside, your mother room out inside? Like, that's where I'm kind of leaning towards. And instead of trying to become experts, allow a square footage that we're okay with. And that would cover all of that area. That's, that's where I'd kind of try to lean to. I know many cultivators that have also done the approach that Chair Bonzio is speaking of, that they actually utilize some of their square footage that's approved for nursery space as well. But that is affect things. But sometimes having more plants available to be able to put in, in the ground is very, very important. It, it's, there's a lot to factor there. I think it'd be pretty hard to make a determination. I've seen anywhere from clones that were fully rooted right in the ground to grow, all the way up to three gallon pots that were, you know, two feet wide by three and a half feet tall, put in the ground to the flowering area. So I think that'd be a pretty hard definition to, to go after.
Yeah, I, I do realize it's quite complex. I was thinking more in terms of perhaps a timeframe might be something more manageable for us during which the cloning is happening rather than the growing.
All right. Thomas, is your hand back up or is it still up?
It's back, it's back up.
Alan?
Yeah, go ahead.
Peggy's been raising her hand and.
I'll defer to Peggy and then I'll go after Peggy.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't see her.
Okay, so there's another way you could look at it. I, I kind of think it's irresponsible of us to expand the growing area. I don't know enough about the industry to know how much water you're going to need for propagation or how much increased water you're going to need. But I don't think this is the time to be increasing water usage when we're in a drought. But I do think that there's another alternative in that, you know, like what, what Alan said, you know, you have your space and your 10% that you've already been given. And that you could recommend that they get a tax exemption if they say, well, I need to use 20% of my space. I need the 10% that I've already been allocated, but I need to use some of my existing grow space for additional propagation. And so I want a tax exemption for that. I mean, the county might lose some revenue, but it's not fair to overly tax the industry if in fact they're using their space for propagation as opposed to, you know, growing full-size plants. So I think that's another alternative that the county can look at. Likes, you know, if they come in there with a plan, a business plan that says, hey, I need 20%, I need an additional 20 or 15%, don't tax me on that. And, and they could get a tax exemption. That, that could be another alternative. But I, I can't see expanding the grow area in a time when we're in a water shortage because that impacts your, your neighbors, your people that are relying on your water for their domestic use on just a staff gets to decide, you know? I, I'm just not going for that right now. And the other thing I don't understand, and maybe, you know, someone can, like Thomas, can explain. And the other thing I don't understand, and maybe, you know, someone can, like Thomas can explain. Do people really work at night? Do they really need all this lighting at night? You know, I, I thought it was funny when you talked about the harbor light fight, light on your forehead. Because my husband used to commercial fish at the mouth of the clam with one of those. And that's all he got. So, you know, how much running around outdoors do you do at night? And then I don't really understand what, you know, vegetative state means. Do you need lights at night to keep your plants from, from flowering? I don't know the industry. So why do you need to run around at night with this new lighting that wasn't there before? And if you did have any lighting, wouldn't it just be some low level solar lights so you don't fall on the trail? Do you really need a whole bunch of lights? So maybe somebody can answer that because I don't know the, the answer to that question.
Thanks Peggy, I like that, both of them.
I don't know what order. I think Thomas had his hand up before everybody else. So go ahead, Thomas.
So just to give you some perspective, I am currently at a federally legal facility side. As far as how long clones, I think that's really, really hard for staff to follow and pay attention to. Some insight, I just this week trans or planted some immature plants under state definition into a cultivation area that the clones were cut in April. So that just, just trying to give you some perspective, it's, it can be months. I've seen as long as four to five months from when the clones cut. Because you can just keep cutting at them and cutting them back. Because some people will grow up their immature plants, take cuts off of that and then keep growing them up, maybe take a second round of cuts and then plant them. So I just, I think that's if, if you put a timeframe on it, I think that's undue burden on staff that they probably don't have the time to follow would be where I'm at. So that's it for now.
Thank you, Thomas.
One of the things in response to Commissioner O'Neill's question about the night lighting, I know that's been brought up by several people is OSHA compliance. But the primary regulatory objective that we're bringing that forward for is that many people use that lighting to stall the flowering of plants, to keep it in what's called a vegetative state. So we're, we're not trying to comply with OSHA with this. We're trying to create a mechanism that we currently don't have that allows cultivators to implement an industry practice in a way that's legal.
Noah, you've had your hand up and then Melanie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I, I wanted to chime in specifically in response to what Commissioner O'Neill said was her concern that, you know, expanding the allowed area for propagation for immature plants, however we define, however long that period lasts, is going to expand the water use. And that given the current drought conditions, it seems irresponsible to do anything that would expand or encourage expanding the, the, you know, the, the use of water. I just wanted to return to what I think I heard Director Ford or another staff person say, which is that, to be clear, just by expanding the allowed area for propagation, we're not expanding the allowed water that can be used for the total operation. The total water budget for the operation is what's permitted under the permit generally. They don't get an extra allowance for propagation. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is absolutely what was said.
Yeah, I, so I mean, I think there's still, there's still reason to have concern that there are other environmental impacts that we're expanding, as it were, by allowing an expanded propagation area. But I just wanted to be real clear, given the importance of, of water and the drought, that I think that's not an additional impact that we would be allowing with this.
Melanie, you're up.
Yeah, so I, I guess the, the main issue really for a lot of people is the extra light then, even if it can seem insignificant. We're talking about 18 hours once for a certain size. So I don't know, it is very complicated. And I do understand that we're doing this because, because of the state restrictions. That's my understanding. But I would prefer to see everything just rolled into one permit. Because, I mean, they're plants. I mean, you can't like, you know, trying to micromanage what everyone is doing is, it's going to be impossible. And so limiting the lighting and, and everything else for the operation in totality, I think is the simplest approach. I'm just not 100% sure if we would comply with the state regulations by doing so.
Go ahead, Director.
Just in, in fairness, we are, we would be complying with the state regulations. It does take a little bit of a different state license, but we coordinate with the state on license approvals. One of the things that I, I think I want to say, and maybe this isn't good to say, but it's honest, is that much of the industry right now uses string lights illegally. So it's far better to have it regulated and be able to track it and be able to identify those who are legal and those who are not than it is to continue to encourage non-compliance.
Yeah, 100%.
You're muted, Melanie.
Yeah, I'm still interested in hearing more from staff regarding some of the definitions. But I think that what I'm hearing is that it would be simpler from a lot of people's perspective to have it somehow rolled all into one permit.
I'm not, Commissioner McFaur, I'm not sure why, what you're saying with one permit. I'm not sure how.
I mean, to just, you know, allow people to designate a certain part of their area towards propagation rather than trying to separate it out.
So the propagation area would be included within the cultivation area?
Because, I mean, once you start getting into the definitions, it is, I mean, there are plants. So not to say it can't be done, but it is going to be a little bit more challenging to come up with the, that framework.
So I appreciate that. And maybe one of the recommendations I would make to the commission right now, given the fact that several of you have made this comment, is that if that is the direction that the commission thinks the county should go, then perhaps that would be part of your motion is, or your direction to us to go back and modify the ordinance to basically define the cultivation area as all activities, including propagation. And then that would be your recommendation to the board.
Yes, and then perhaps in there you could put, you know, certain stipulations that would make it easier to pinpoint illegality versus legality and some of the other points that have been raised.
Thank you, Melanie. Hey, it's at 9:30. Are we going to continue this or are we going to keep going? You said we can go if, if the commission wants to keep talking about this subject, but.
The securities not here.
Right.
So we don't have a time set.
So what's the feeling of the commission? Do we want to keep deliberating on this or do we want to continue it to next meeting? I mean, that's basically what I'm asking. We got a whole, everything from the consent calendar that has to be continued to the next meeting.
Yeah, well, I'd like to finish this off and, and give direction to staff.
Okay, is everybody in agreement with that? I don't want, I'm not trying.
I am.
I'm in agreement with them.
Okay, so let's keep, let's keep moving on it. Thomas, you had your hand up. I think you're the next one, then Mike, after him.
So personally, I'm seeing this as a 25% flip the opposite way. Because currently county policy is 10% propagation area on top of your cultivation. And I'm hearing multiple commissioners saying that they want 0% on top of cultivation area, unless I'm mishearing things. So I'm strongly against that. I, I could explain, I could talk for hours of the reasons for allowing a larger cultivation area. But I would, I would be supportive of a compromise of that, or sorry, propagation area. I'd be supportive of some sort of rule that part of that percentage couldn't have artificial lighting at all. Or whatever this task lighting, new task lighting thing that may get approved to deal with energy concerns. I understand the water concerns, so it would be a modification. And then they would have to rewrite their water budget for the annual year. Because I, I would think that would be fair to hear the water concerns. And maybe, I don't know, I'm just throwing out a carrot to hear other commissioners. Maybe there is some sort of a percentage of annual water use that permities would be required to have as storage to be allowed this larger propagation area. I'm just, I'm throwing out some bones, throwing out some ideas that maybe might pique interest in other commissioners.
Yeah, I think that's what we were getting at. I don't think anyone would object to growers using the same amount of resources for more plants.
Mike, you've been waiting.
Thank you, Chairman. So my concern is, is the use of water and the amount of acres that we have been constrained with by the Board of Supervisors in their resolution back in 2018 for the cap of distribution. I just want to make sure that I understood the director to say that the amount of acres that the cap distribution is on the watersheds include the, the propagation areas? Or is it just the growing areas, the cultivation?
So in fairness, one of the things I would really like to do through the chair is, is take a look at that. Because I, I want to look at exactly and see what we defined in the ordinance, what we defined in the environmental document. I don't think we defined propagation area. That's one of the things we're trying to do right now. And, and so I, I don't know why it would have been included in the resolution as something we called out separately if we didn't regulate it. We did regulate nurseries, commercial nurseries, community propagation centers. Those are specifically defined in the ordinance. But I'd need to refresh my memory. Ms. Richardson, I don't know if you have more input on that. But I, I, I really feel uncomfortable saying more than that to you right now. And I know that's an important factor to you.
Yeah, my concern is, is, is the intent of that was to restrict the amount of water usage and, and what is going on in those watersheds to keep water in those areas for other uses as well. Besides just for cannabis, just for grows there. I'm in agreement with Commissioner O'Neill about if there's a problem on the sales tax, you know, for the cannabis with Measure S with an agreed upon amount there. If we get some sort of alleviation there so that they're not completely taxed on the propagation that is not being used for sale at that point. Because that's what the Measure S is all about, is for the possible sales in my mind and I think in most of the public. So that's part of my concerns right there.
Hey, Brian Mitchell, you've been waiting a long time, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It seems like we're going around in circles. There is a fundamental question of whether or not these caps do or do not include the propagation areas. And so I don't feel comfortable giving staff direction until we know whether or not we'd be in violation of the Board of Supervisors' direction. But setting that aside, I just wanted to say I am mostly in agreement with what Commissioner Mulder has been saying. I think that changing the cultivation area to include these areas that have not been previously counted are going to have a lot of unintended consequences, most specifically to the taxation piece of it. I know that there's a lot of the industry that's really struggling and adding to their tax bill at this time is, is not something that I could, could support. I do agree that if we are, and it doesn't sound like we are, but if we were adding to the amount of water usage or electricity usage, that there should be additional mitigation measures. But we've been told by staff multiple times that that wasn't the case. And so I feel that something along the lines of what the staff is proposing is closer to what I could support than a whole change to the definition of what is cultivation. Thank you.
Noah?
I'd actually, I thank you, but I defer to Peggy. I saw her hand up if, if she.
I want to just make really clear, I never suggested that you take away the 10% propagation area that they already have. And so that's not even on the table as far as I'm concerned. I'm saying if they, if they needed 20%, the additional 10% would come from their existing area of grow, grow area. And they get some sort of tax relief because they're not growing mature plants in that 10%. I'm not suggesting that now you lose 10% and, you know, we're making it harder on people. But my concern, and maybe two years from now, it, it makes sense to add 25% onto their existing area for propagation. But right now during a drought, I don't think that it's very smart. I mean, we're going in the, the wrong direction. And I don't think you can truly monitor what people are doing out there. You know, there's too many people, not enough staff. It's, you, you don't need to be out there micromanaging everybody and figuring out when their plants get moved in the ground or whatever. You know, that, that's just way too much. And so we shouldn't create rules that we can't enforce or make criminals out of people when we don't need to. All I'm saying is if they need additional space, they use their existing grow space and they ask for tax relief because I'm only growing on 90% of my grow space because I needed an additional 10% of it for propagation. So don't tax me on it. That's it.
All right. Noah, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've been, you've been conducting this really well, Alan. A couple of times I thought you were going to speak up and then your hand went back down. So I hope you will give yourself the chair, a moment to speak when, you know. But I, I just wanted to chime in before we get, you know, too close to a resolution here. I, I want to remind us that there were four items, I think, that were in the CCLU changes, proposed changes. One was the multiple, the, the multiple triple Rs on a given site must have a discretionary permit. And nobody seems to have any controversy about that. I just wanted to go on record as saying we support that or I support that. I also, the second one was the, was the different rules around the mixed, around allowing certain limited wattage lighting for, for outdoor lighting. I am in support of that, although I wanted to go on record that to my, from, you know, from what I've heard, I agree with what a number of different commentators said, which is that the same, we could achieve that goal even better if we just, if we define that in terms of the total watts per square footage, per square foot area and not, you know, define the type of bulbs that are specified that they can use. But, and then the four. But, and then the fourth point on the CCLU changes was to do with the not applying enhanced setback requirements to a certain type of situation involving, you know, and I'm in favor of that as well. I have no concern with that. And so I just wanted to sort of put that out there. But the thing that I am still having some difficulty with is this, you know, essentially expanding the allowance for propagation, even though we would place limits on it for, for water use. So I am, you know, kind of inclined to support what, what Peggy just said, what Commissioner O'Neill just said. I in no way want to take away the 10% nursery allowance that, that growers have come to count on and that that's become standard in the practice. But, but, you know, I think perhaps we have to look at other ways. I'm, I'm uncomfortable recommending that we allow up to 25% without looking at some other options like we've been discussing.
Thank you, Noah. Mike, I see you put your hand up, so go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. The only thought I had was I think the cap is intended to not apply to propagation areas because we weren't considering that as a substantial resource hog when we were developing the CCLU. But I think your commission could direct the board or ask the board to, in their review of permits annually, to include the propagation area in the calculation of cultivation when applied to the cap. And you, they could do that by a resolution. We wouldn't have to tinker around with the ordinance at all to achieve that. That's my only comment.
I'm gonna make a comment on this. I've been thinking about this and I haven't had a lot of time to think it through, so maybe I'm missing something. But it seems like we're, we have really two issues here. One is the cultivation area and the other one is how the, this is getting taxed. So what if we suggested to the supervisors that they are going about how they're extracting the money out of this in a wrong way and say that it doesn't matter, we, we, we permit the amount of, of crop that can be grown based on the project that comes before us, the amount of water that can be used, all those things. What they do on that space is, is their business. They want, like I said before, if they want to do 50% of it as nursery, let them do 50% of it as nursery. But the, the money end of it is not based on the amount of ground that they, they cover, but on the amount of product that they sell at the end that has been tracked, traced, however they do it. I don't know much about the money end of it, I'll be honest. That's the part that I haven't spent that much time. But it seems like they're two completely separate issues and we're getting hung up on the one because of the way the money is, is calculated and that's on the footage of the, the product grown. So let's not worry about how the product is grown. Let that, let those guys who are the specialists on it, the people out there in the, in the field that know what they're, what they're growing or attempt to, I guess, and suggest that they, they get, and the money's all that, that the county wants anyhow. That's the bottom line. So let's, let the, base that on the product that is produced at the end because that's the final result. I mean, I, it seems like it separates the two issues. Okay. You have a thought?
I, I think I would like to suggest that one of the things we probably really need to do at this point, I would like to move this forward, but before doing it, it seems to me that having a better understanding of, of how the current cultivation practices work would be helpful. Because I, I understand what you're saying, Chair Bonjo, but I don't think it's all about money at this point. I think there's some things that went in, that went into some of the early definitions, but there is an awful lot of practice and an awful lot of art and an awful lot that goes into the whole cultivation process right now that may or may not get captured adequately here. And one of my concerns is, is I think Commissioner Neal tried to recognize the fact that there is a distinct set of cultivation practices that are going on right now and not wanting to interrupt those too much. But it may help the commission to hear from a few different growers in terms of why an expanded cultivation area would be desirable. And I apologize, we didn't do a better job of, of presenting that.
So what do you suggest?
I, I would suggest that you continue this and allow us to work with a, a couple of cultivators and industry representatives to come back and, and present some information for the public and for the commission's consideration in terms of, of why this is important, what the implications of, of making changes or not making changes are.
I see Melanie has her hand up. I mute for a second.
Just gonna say that the only way that could be at Hall Fair would be to add like 10% to everybody and let them propagate if they want. And I don't think that would be very popular.
Any other thoughts? If not, go ahead, Mike.
I, I would move with the Director's suggestion to bring that information forward at our next meeting or the soonest meeting that we can with that information so that we can better digest this and have a, a better resolution about any change on these CCLU definitions.
A second then.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on that?
To be clear, that was to August 5th.
If that's what you think you'd be ready. Okay, so that is to August 5th. All right, so seeing no hands up. We have a motion, a second. I'd ask for a roll call vote on that. Laura?
Alan Bonjo?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. So Director and staff will bring us back something at the next meeting. That'll be good. So we have a little housekeeping to do. We didn't get to any of our consent items that were pulled. So I would like a motion from somebody in a second to continue all the pulled items, which was everything except for the four that were already continued. So I'd angle through them, but I don't think.
One, one motion.
One motion, one motion should work, so.
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask, you know, we, we've been continuing a lot of items and we have a packed agenda. This month happened to have five Thursdays, I believe, and would be wondering if anyone else would be willing to come in on that fifth Thursday to get through this consent agenda so that our next meeting doesn't have two meetings worth of consent items. I would personally, but.
I would, I would approve that. My amendment on this is to make sure that the CCLU goes in front of any consent calendar that gets pulled in August 5th.
Redford, you understand? Yes, so.
So I would move that we, I would make a motion that we continue all of the consent items to July 29th.
Exactly.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion on that?
Just a clarification, that was all the items were pulled from consent, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And some of those items that had already been pulled and were continued might show up on that as well, but that probably just convoluted that. So yes, you're right, Thomas. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on it? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please. Yes.
I had, I had one question. Since they were all pulled out of consent, does that mean when they roll over, they're all still pulled out of consent?
Yes. And we'll, we'll do those before we take on any new business. These will be the only items on that agenda, on that, okay.
For July 29th.
Right night. All right, so roll call vote, Laura.
Alan Bonjo?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for staying late to get through that. And with that, unless there's anything else the Director wants to add or the commissioners have a comment on anything.
I just want to say thank you, Brian, for thinking to suggest that we could add an extra meeting and try to clear up this congestion because, yeah, the, the, this looks a lot better than continuing all of those things into August. So thanks.
I agree.
And just to make sure, the CCLU will be put at the front of anything else if it's continued August 5th, right?
We'll do the same thing with that that we did tonight, which is that there will be the consent calendar, but then anything pulled from consent will be after the discussion on the CCLU.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. With that, we are adjourned. So everybody, have a.
Good night.